Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the July 15 Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting. Call the meeting to order, please.
Mr. Holroyd?
Present.
Mrs. Knoll?
Here.
Mr. Drury?
Present.
Mr. Roan?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you very much. For the invocation, we have Pastor Cliff Bowen from the Coastal Community Church. Good to see you, sir.
Good evening, Ms. Knoll, and on behalf of our senior pastor, Shawn Brown, thank you for inviting us here tonight. It's an honor to be here to offer the invocation for tonight's meeting. Thank you. Let's go to the Lord in prayer, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we gather before you this evening with hearts that are grateful for the privilege of serving our community. As the York County Board of Supervisors gathers to discuss matters that impact the lives of our citizens, we ask for your guidance and we ask for your wisdom. Grant each member here clarity of thought, integrity in our decision-making, and a spirit of unity, and may the work done in this room be rooted in justice and compassion in the welfare of our citizens. Help us to listen tonight with open minds, and to speak with respect, and to lead with humility and purpose. We thank you for the gift of the gospel, that though we are sinners, you have redeemed us through the life, death, and resurrection of your Son, Jesus Christ; for it is only by your grace that we are reconciled to you and empowered to serve others. Bless our county, bless our residents, our first responders, educators, and all who labor daily for the well-being of this community. And may your peace and unity prevail as we strive together to build a stronger future for all of the citizens of York County. For it is in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. You say the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Stephen?
Certainly. Please rise if you're able. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have a couple of presentations tonight, but before we begin, I would like you all to take a minute and say a few prayers. For the people in Texas, you see the rain that we have today, will think of the rain that they had and the travesty that it brought to them. And please, God, that they find all the family members that they are still missing. So take a minute, please. First presentation is the Towing Advisory Board presentation, and that's going to be Captain Jason Houston. Sorry.
Good evening, board members and those in attendance. As you know, I'm Captain Jason Houston with the York-Pococin Sheriff's Office. And tonight, I'm here to present the code proposal that the towing advisory board has been working on over since the last year, since you appointed the members onto the board. And we're going to begin with just a quick review. I was here before y'all in February of last year. And the first thing was what our mission was going to be as a towing advisory board, taking into account the state law that set this up. And the mission was for the York County Towing Advisory Board will protect the public and provide oversight by establishing standards for consistent pricing, professionalism, and qualifications for those seeking to provide services to the public as police-requested towing and recovery professionals. And the purpose of the towing board was we'll provide guidance to the York County Board of Supervisors on the applicable requirements of county codes regarding police-requested towing and storage of vehicles while in the performance of their law enforcement duties. Just reminding the board that the police-requested towing is paramount in this. This does not affect private citizens calling their own tow trucks, and this does not in any way affect them. This is law enforcement-related towing, and I'll get into that here in just a little bit more, but again, this is being called by law enforcement officers. So over the past year, since the approval of the towing advisory board, the appointed members have worked diligently to discuss the proposals for the county code that you have before you today for consideration. I want to let the board know that there was much collaboration between the board members being made up of members of the towing community, which there are several here in attendance today. Our vice chairman, George Mahone, from Scimino Enterprises is here. He was the vice chair of the board. I also see other members of the towing community here. This was made up of two members of the towing community, two members of law enforcement, and then one private citizen. So it was a five-member board. We met every month, starting last August, and a couple times we met in February and March, two times a month, trying to get this resolution prepared to bring to you today. So the topics of consideration included the private citizen complaints and concerns. Those were things that were brought to us either through law enforcement, through the private citizens, complaints about fees that they had been charged, irregularities in billing. A lot of times, these came to us from insurance companies that had complaints about bills that they were paying. There were concerns from the tow company representatives. They brought in their own concerns about why is one company charging this fee and another company can't do this, and there was a lot of irregularities in that. There's also the policies and procedures of law enforcement, not just the York-Pococin Sheriff's Office, but also Virginia State Police. In speaking with them, they told us that they were pretty much powerless to regulate fees on the interstate because York County did not have a code, and the Virginia State Police could not enforce or regulate the fees that were being charged to motorists on the interstate. So if you yourself were traveling through a jurisdiction that did not have a county code, and you broke down or you were involved in an accident on interstate, you would be subject to whatever fees the local towing companies charged, because Virginia State Police would not be able to regulate that or to enforce those rules. We also took into account, of course, the Code of Virginia, which sets up the rules for us and empowered this board to enable us to do this. And of course, we took into account a lot of municipal codes from other jurisdictions. Sometimes out-of-state jurisdictions, we got their county codes or city codes or state codes, and then we reviewed those with the help of the county attorney, and everybody was able to review those. So before you hear is the proposed code, which covers these topics. We start off with definitions, and then the assistance in obtaining a tow truck, the administration of the tow list, the equipment requirements, the secure storage, the fee schedule, and the dispute resolution. And I'll touch briefly on each one of these in the next slides. So the definitions, these are widely established and recognized verbiage. They're taken directly from the Code of Virginia. They're taken from other municipal codes, and they're also taken from the towing community and industry so that everybody recognizes this verbiage. Much like other legal codes, these terms are required, so anyone reading the proposed code can easily understand the terminology being referenced on billing receipts, the official reports, and any type of conflict resolution, so everybody understands what the words are and what this references. The assistance in obtaining tow truck services, this describes when and how that the tow truck services would be requested by a member of law enforcement, again, whether it's the York-Pococin Sheriff's Office, Virginia State Police, or another law enforcement entity that is operating within York County that's empowered by mutual aid. It also describes why law enforcement is requesting the tow truck services instead of the vehicle owner or operator calling their own, such as they were involved in a vehicle crash, they're not able to call, or maybe they've been arrested, or they're just not with the vehicle, it's disabled, not sure of the circumstances at the time. But this is when law enforcement is taking control of the situation and requesting a tow truck to clear up the roadway. Then we go into the administration of the police towing list. This explains how the rotational towing list will be maintained by the York-Pococin Sheriff's Office. It explains the requirements for the company seeking to be admitted to the voluntary rotation list. Again, this is a rotation list that sets up multiple companies, so each time that a company is needed, it goes down a list that's maintained by York County Communications and Central Dispatch. And this is a voluntary list. Nobody is being made to put in application for this list. This is voluntary. And it also explains the requirements of the tow companies, once they have been admitted onto the rotational wrecker list, and what they have to conform with in order to stay in good standing on the rotational list. The next one goes into the equipment requirements. It explains in detail the minimum equipment, signage, licenses, inspections, and insurance required to be admitted to and stay on the rotational list, which is also subject to inspection every, or once a year. So this sets the minimum requirements and says what is going to be needed to be admitted to the list and to remain on the list. Further delineates into a light duty and a heavy-duty towing vehicle, and the equipment that would be required for each type of truck, and goes into things like gross vehicle weight rating, and the different equipment that is needed to tow everything from, you know, a small sedan all the way up to a tractor-trailer or a tour bus. The next is the secured storage. It requires each tow company admitted to the rotational list to maintain a secure storage facility for the safekeeping of the towed vehicle until the owner or their agent is able to pick up the vehicle, such as an insurance company, the owner themselves, and it maintains the safe storage until they're able to get back to the car, as law enforcement is entrusting the towing companies with these vehicles. It explains how towed vehicles shall be released to the owner upon their arrival at the storage lot, and it also requires clearly posted signage with the company name, phone numbers, and their hours of operation, so that the vehicle owners understand when and how they can pick up the vehicle. The next is the fee schedule. It sets consistent pricing and fees for commonly administered towing services. A lot of this came both from other county codes, city codes, municipal codes, as well as input from the towing community, and we went through this line by line to make sure that everything was covered. It also sets consistent pricing and fees for the use of specialized equipment or services, additional mileage if they have to tow the vehicle beyond their storage lot. There's additional personnel fees and administrative fees to cover all areas that they may need to bill for. It also sets consistent pricing for the storage of vehicles and sets the flat rate for how much can be charged for a passenger car versus, again, a tractor-trailer or a tour bus, or something of that nature. The last area is the dispute resolution and the operator compliance. So this permits the owner of a towed vehicle believing that the fees or services rendered did not follow the county code, which you see before you, to make a formal complaint to the sheriff's office. When they make this complaint, then it permits the sheriff's office to investigate the complaint against the tow company and to bring their investigation and results to the towing advisory board for consideration, and then it permits the towing advisory board to review the complaint and issue discipline in accordance with the prescribed manner detailed here in the county code. So the citizen would feel like they were unjustly served or unjustly charged for a fee. There'll be a website that's set up for this that gives them the complaint form. There's going to be an email address. There's a phone number already set up, so they will email this or bring it in person to the sheriff's office. We will investigate it as a sheriff's office, and then find out by reviewing body cam footage, dash camera footage, reaching out to the tow company, getting receipts, and looking at all the information, and then have a report to be able to give to the towing advisory board, so that the towing advisory board can look at this and see if the towing company was consistent and in line with the county code that is being proposed. And this is a chart that I just wanted to throw in here. I brought this chart before you before, when I came in February of 24, and, I'm sorry, in February 23, and I just wanted to show you how the toes have been escalating since 2021. As you can see, there's a sharp increase between '23 and '24, the amount of vehicles that we have towed. These are law enforcement-related toes. As of the numbers for July 1st, we're already on board to surpass 1,000 this year. So there's going to be even more increase in 2025 as we continue to progress through So at this point, I'm open to questions by the board. If there's anything that's unclear, or is there anything that you wish me to clarify?
Does anybody have any questions? Tom?
Just to make sure I understand what we've got here. He's given us the pre-brief. We have an open public hearing here on number 10, right? So I will reserve my questions for the open, for the public hearing.
All right. I would like to say that this is a long time coming, and there's been a lot of give-and-take on both sides, different prices that people were charging, and I think your committee has done a phenomenal job in tabulating every possible instance that you could think of.
That's what we tried to do, ma'am.
I know you, I know, and I know it must have been exhausting, but you all want to quit on us, but don't you dare.
No. No, not at all. We're happy to get it to this point and to be able to bring it to the board for consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you.
I just wanted to echo that, Captain. Tremendous job. Ms. Constable, thank you for the efforts that you put forward in guiding this team, and to the team itself. I think it's a very complete document. I've read through it thoroughly and have a few suggestions, but we'll wait till the public hearing. I just wanted to take this moment to thank the team for such a tremendous job.
Yes, sir. I will relay it to the other members that aren't present.
Okay.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next presentation is the staff acknowledgement, and the county administrator?
Thank you, Mrs. Knoll. And if you would mind, if you would help me by presenting a couple plaques here?
Okay.
That'd be good. So if you could head out front, we'll get this started. National Association of Counties is an organization we belong to and participate in pretty regularly, and they offer an awards program for innovation and good customer service, best practices in county government. And we submitted several programs and were successful in winning these awards, and they were presented this past weekend in Philadelphia at the national conference. To start out with, Back Creek Park Revitalization. So Mrs. Newcomb, if you could, please, if you'd come up front, I'll tell you a little bit about this, and if you have any questions about the program, certainly Mrs. Newcomb can answer. Please do. And so the revitalization, so the park is about 27 acres, and what's been added to the park recently? What we most commonly know it for is the boat ramp, but it has such great location. There's a lot that can be done with that park. The board knows that we added pickleball courts by using some tennis courts, and by the way, they just had their first tournament down there, and it was a big success. We've added a kayak ramp to give some stability to launching kayaks. It also allows folks with disabilities to be able to use the waterways as well. And part of the parks, another issue at this particular park that we've discussed for quite a few years is Dog Park. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board had recommended the Dog Park, and we struggled with that a little bit, but we came to the conclusion that this was a great park and a great location for that. So we'd like to thank Mrs. Newcomb and her staff for a great project down there, very successful.
We all think that.
Next up, Chief Baldwin, if you could come up. Several years ago, if you recall, on the football field, Damar Hamlin suffered a heart attack, NFL player. And so just prior to this, the fire department was actually working on a program to make, to bring to everyone's attention the issues with heart attacks in the general public. About 350,000 people a year suffer a heart attack. And so they put together this program to raise awareness. It was very well received and has been recognized by the National Association of Counties. So we'd like to thank staff for doing that.
Chief, that's good work, achieving that in the first week of your term.
Chief, don't leave. You're up again.
Oh, okay.
Right. So you may recall that for quite a few years, we have talked about the need for a fire station, another fire station in Upper York County. And as it happens, the county operated a Colonial Group Home Commission. This is a, this location was used for youth that could not stay in residence at their own homes for one reason or another. So this was a joint project between several localities, and it was used for that purpose. But as time went on, there was a different belief about how those things should be handled, and the judges generally assigned the juveniles to this facility. And so that stopped happening, and what we found ourselves with was an empty building that, short of a garage or a base space, looked a lot like a fire station. Individual bunks, had commercial kitchen, et cetera. So we took the opportunity to meet that need for an extra fire station in the north end of the county, and it was recognized by the National Association of Counties for innovative ideas. So we appreciate the fire department and their thinking on that, and I believe Mr. Morgan was pretty influential in that as well. So thank you.
I know it was very important.
Thank you all for your support. Margaret, if you'd come on up? The Heron Project is an after-school program that's done conjunction with social services and the Boys and Girls Club with a grant, the idea being to address substance abuse in younger children. And again, we were acknowledged for a innovative program, and I'd like to thank Margaret and her staff and the Boys and Girls Club for their participation. Mr. Wyatt, if you would come up, please? So if you've watched these kinds of presentations over the years, you would know that Tim and his staff have worked diligently at recognition in this, and we have hovered around in the top 10 for a couple of years. But this year, Mr. Wyatt, and along with his staff, had an exceptional entry, and today, we are first in our category, which is population of 150,000 and below. So it's been a long time coming and very well-deserved. We appreciate all of IT's work on that. Thank you very much, Mrs. Knoll. And we do have one more acknowledgement that we'd like to make, but it's for a board member rather than a staff member. Mr. Shepherd, congratulations on a hole-in-one.
Hole-in-one!
It is.
Try, 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 try again, and finally you made it. Tom, congratulations on that. But congratulations to each and every one of you who work on these projects. I don't think the citizens realize how much time and effort you put in and how proud you are of what you're able to accomplish, and so I'm glad that we had this opportunity to present the awards to you on behalf of yourself and your staff, and on behalf of the citizens, because I think we have a phenomenal group of people who work for this county. So again, thank you so very, very much for your work and effort. Any questions from the board? No? So we'll go to citizens' comment period, and I have Pam Puchow who signed up. Three minutes, Pam, address, and so forth and so on.
My name is Pam Puchow. I reside at 103 Kimberly Court. Donald Trump, a well-documented partygoer and friend of convicted sex trafficker and pedophile Jeffrey Epstein, made the following statement, quote, "I'll tell you the funniest thing. I'll go backstage before a Miss Teen USA show, and everyone's getting dressed and ready and everything, and no men anywhere. And I'm allowed to go in because I'm the owner of the pageant, and therefore I'm inspecting it. The girls are standing there with no clothes on. And you see those incredible women, and so I sort of get away with things like that," unquote. Those so-called women were as young as 14. That explains why Trump doesn't want Epstein's customer list revealed. Trump's budget will result in widespread harm. Much of the destruction will not occur until the 2026 midterms. He wants Congress to retain a Republican majority. He hopes the electorate will forget about the coming carnage. Children will be denied food, health care, and reductions in educational programs. He will give $1,000 to birth a child, but unless you are financially stable, you and the baby are expendable. Trump's tariffs are part of his revenge tour. He is charging Brazil a 50% tariff because they are prosecuting former President Bolsonaro for trying to overthrow the results of an election, just like Trump did. So you pay more for beef and coffee because Trump is having a temper tantrum. Those with private health insurance will see higher costs and the closing of hospitals, nursing homes, and doctors' offices that you now use. The cost of energy will increase while pollution rises. He has defunded medical research, gutted cybersecurity, weather agencies, FEMA, education, and women's health care. Unless you own a large corporation or are worth billions, your benefits will not outweigh your losses. Immigrants whose only crime is a misdemeanor for illegal entry are being abducted off streets, from courthouses, workplaces, schools, and churches by masked men in unmarked cars who refuse to identify themselves. They are being placed in concentration camps without due process and sent to prisons in countries known for human rights abuses. Now US citizens are part of that roundup. Trump is threatening to revoke birthright and naturalized citizenships, and those with families who have been citizens for many generations but publicly hold Trump to account. Trump continues to sell access to private audiences. He is accepting foreign countries' financial tributes paid to him. He is a grifter. Trump reveals revels in sadistic cruelty, chaos, and fear. He has pardoned those who have attacked law enforcement officers, defrauded people of hundreds of millions of dollars, sole government broads, violated federal election laws, illegally work for foreign governments, and tax evasion. He is extorting universities to get his personal beliefs instituted, including discrimination, teaching false history, declaring curriculum, and what with which international students may attend, causing higher tuition rates. This is just the tip of the iceberg. His supporters and our legislators know what he is and just don't care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would care to speak at this time? I don't have any other citizens signed up to speak. If not, I'll move forward to the county attorney reports. Mr. Hill?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Nothing this evening? Thank you. Nothing.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Now, county administrators' reports.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'd like to take a second and introduce Lori Nardozzi, who's sitting here next to Heather. She is the newest member of our county team, and she is joining us in the role of Assistant Deputy Clerk. She brings with her a wealth of experience. In the past six years, she's been working as deputy clerk in another locality, to be unnamed. And during her time there, she's developed a very strong foundation of the important work that it takes to support you all as a board, and ensuring accurate records and facilitating transparent and effective government, so we're very excited about that. But what's particularly special about Lori's arrival is it really is a homecoming, because she is a York County resident. This is where she should be, and we're excited to have her. So welcome.
Welcome aboard, Lori.
Right. Right. Secondly, I want to take the annual opportunity here to thank everyone that was involved in the Fourth of July celebration. It truly is a cross-functional effort to get this done, everywhere from Kristi Olson's staff- get this done. Everywhere, from Kristi Olson's staff, the Public Works staff, public safety, 911. It's hard to imagine any department that doesn't touch the Fourth of July celebration in some manner. And I'm so proud that they work together so well and pull this off every Fourth of July. You all had a great parade. It was nice to see. Those of you who took the opportunity to ride through the parade, it was very nice. So we appreciate everything the staff did. Another staff issue that I'd like to bring up and throw some accolades out there for is what was done for Chief Kapczynski. What a wonderful retirement celebration we had for him. It was really a befitting ceremony for someone who has done so much for the county. And I appreciate the effort there, both his staff, the Fire and Life Safety staff, Public Affairs, all the folks that were involved in that. It was really great. The next item I have for you is, we've talked about this, I've talked about this with you all in our one-on-one meetings. We're excited to bring to the citizens a new educational series that's designed to help the citizens learn more about what goes on behind the scenes here at the county and how we do what we do. It's called the York County Gov Series, and we'll offer that behind-the-scenes look to all our residents. Some of the topics that are going to be included are the county's history, geography, public safety operations, court systems, and more. The project will launch in September, and we hope to have applications available. It is a limited number of folks that can participate at one time. We want to do a good job when we're doing that, and we think we need to limit it to about 20. So we're going to take applications, and that should start this week.
How many, how many people are you taking to be a part of this?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay.
Yes.
So the first 20 who signed up, getting ready to sign up.
So how long, how long is this?
Ten weeks.
Ten weeks.
Okay. And how long is each session?
Thursday evening, two hours.
Okay. Is there any way you can tape it and then share that with the community online?
I would imagine we could make that work.
That's a good idea.
It helps get, if you can't participate that much, you can at least view it online.
Well, that is true. But we are hopeful that we will engage people to come and visit with us. We're also looking for volunteers for your boards and commissions, et cetera. And if we don't have them in person, it'd be a little more difficult to do that. But that is a great idea. And the last item that I have for you that I'd like to remind you about is I asked Mr. Hill and Mr. Fuller to work on our legislative agenda. It's that time of the year to start thinking about it. So as you might have some thoughts, if you would share that with them so they could compile that. And in a month or two, we'll come back to you with what we have and make sure that you feel it's appropriate for what the county needs.
Good.
And with that, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain that.
Any questions? If no questions, thank you very much. Now, the count, the staff, not the staff, the board supervisors. Tom, since you were talking, maybe you have something you'd like to add?
Sure. My favorite subject, intersection of 17 and 171. And everybody go, oh, gosh, yeah. Well, I'll tell you what, you have, you get a chance today, you could live part of it. There's a lot of VDOT projects going on down there, okay? And what I wanted to do, there was some confusion over a meeting that they held just recently. Plus, I started getting calls this morning, early, when folks were coming down from 17, and they ran into a traffic jam that was really plugged up, plugged up Walmart and the whole thing. And they thought, okay, the project started. Well, I'm kind of going, trying to rack my brain, figure out what project that was at the time. And as, you know, we know that there's a flyover or overpass, whatever you want to call it. You come down York, you go up Yorktown Road towards 17. You can go north, or you go over the overpass and make a loop coming around. That actually, that work being done up there was not part of that project, okay? But it's a four-day project to do some sewer pre-work, the sewer project, but it gives you a preamble, if you will, to the project that will happen this month. So what I wanted to do, just briefly, is to remind everyone about the projects, because I want to, on my District 5 report, which I'll share with you guys, will be more detailed, and it'll help understand some of these. So there's about four projects that, that's going to hit this section of 17 and 134 and Victory Boulevard. The first one, we've already talked about a lot, that's up in Sheila's district, where it's, they're taking, by Walmart, and they're taking out that, they're adding a full lane on the right-hand side, okay? That's ongoing now. They got the Jersey barriers up. That work's going on. The second project is the widening of Victory Boulevard going towards Picocin between 17 and 134. You've seen the trees cut down because they had to get it done before longer bats decided to hang out there. And they'll be adding a whole lane on that right-hand side. They're also in that project, they're going to end up, as if you were to go up to 134 and turn left, they're going to add another turn lane. And in the process of adding that turn lane, they're going to shut down one of the lanes. And so Victory Boulevard will go from a two-lane heading towards Picocin to one lane. And you can imagine, if you've ever gone through there in the evening, what that's going to look like. And a lot of this is online. Now, in addition to this, I don't even remember if I can remember all these projects. I've already talked about Sheila's project there. There's going to be alternate routing. When they do that turn lane going north up on 134, you will not be able to turn left off of that road. You will have then go down Victory Boulevard all the way to Yorktown Road or Big Bethel, take a left, and then come all the way back up. So that's going to rather secure its route. The other project is the bridge overfly, that I just talked about. So what they're going to do, this project will start on the 21st of this month, okay? So if you're coming up 134, and you want to peel off and go up 17, you will be able to do that. But what's happened, if you want to go over the flyover and do a loop and come back down 17, you will not be able to do that because they're going to shut that down, okay? It's going to be for a very extended period of time. Once they finish that part of the flyover, then they'll, they'll, they'll open that one up and then close the other one. So if you're coming down 17, and you want to get back over towards Picocin, all the neighborhoods over there, go down Yorktown Road or go up on 134, that one will be shut down, okay? That project's going to last over a year, all right? So we're going to be living with several of these projects that'll go into 2026. And the fourth project, this is one that caused some confusion, is when they go to widen, you go now, surprisingly, from 134 down to Big Bethel Road, okay? That's a stretch. And what they're going to do is they're actually, you got two projects that are going in there. And one is going to be a shoulder widening of Victory Boulevard. They'll put, see if I can remember, make sure I get it the correct side, on the south side of the road, which will be on the right, heading towards Picocin, they're going to add two feet, okay? On the north side, I may have these backwards, so forgive me if I do, but that one will have eight foot. This actually, it will be, it's an eight foot, it's going to be a pullover lane, because we have no pullover lanes unless you go into the, you want to go into the ditch. And so that's going to happen. And when they do that eight foot, for sure, they will shut down that portion of Victory Boulevard, okay? For however long it takes, because they cannot do that work down there on the shoulders. Now, they may end up shutting down the other side with the two-foot, but that should be able to get done pretty quick. But there's going to be a lot of turmoil there. One of the problems will be, then how do you get down the road, okay? And there's a plan where you will have to go, you will actually have to go down Big Bethel Road to get anywhere, okay? So this is going to happen, though, let's see, with 27 or 28? So we got a couple of years on that one, and that'll come out. But these, all these projects coming together will do one thing. It will take that intersection of 17 and 134 with Victory Boulevard, and it will jam them up. So I'm just telling you now, I don't, I don't know the solution for whatever way you want to go. There will be some places, I know, I can, I can see it now, people are going to try to sneak through Tab Lakes, okay, to get over towards 17. They'll, they'll be coming in from all different directions. If it's legal, you drive however you want to do to get down there. But it's going to be quite a bit of work, okay? And I just want to, I'll be talking about these later, again, in more detail.
Again and again.
As we close, right.
Thank you very much.
Tom, do you have any estimate on the timeline on some of these, like the extra lane on Victory?
Years.
Yeah, they will, well, it's going to, that one, when it starts, the whole project should last at least a year, okay? At least a year. Every one of these is going to be almost, well, some of them might be nine months, 10 months. When it did, in addition to that shoulder widening, they'll be also putting in that multi-use path. That's going to be about another eight-feet, 10-foot path that will come out of that, behind the HRSD pressure-reducing station. There's a park that we're building in there, it's a walking park with a lot of wonderful trails and stuff. That will connect, and there will then be this path that you can take along Victory Boulevard towards Picocin, and that'll be an extension for years and years to come. But it's, every one of these projects, this will be into this, will be the end to this for probably another three years, three to four years, okay?
Thank you. Stephen?
Thank you. And a couple of things, real quick, but also to kind of follow up on what Mrs. Shepherd just said. If you're interested, try to keep up with all the VDOT work going on the county. County staff does have a webpage on our, on our, on the county's webpage to talk about the different VDOT projects and links to all of them, as well as other VDOT resources. So if you're interested in following along, just go to the main yorkcounty.gov webpage, type in VDOT in the search bar, and that should probably be your first result. And you can get all the details, what Mrs. Shepherd just shared, with those projects there. So two things. One, I had the opportunity this past Friday to, a sub-invitation of a tour of Newport News Water Works. Spent about three hours there Friday morning. They walked me through the, the work they're doing to the dam, what's happening there, what the end state will be, why they're doing it. Also, some behind-the-scenes of what they do to treat the water that we drink. And without getting into all the details, I will say that, one, they have a very strong, competent, smart, dedicated staff there to make sure our drinking water is safe when we get it. And I feel more confident than ever, when I turn that faucet on, I'm going to have good, clean drinking water, just knowing what, what that water goes through to get from that reservoir and all their reservoirs to our taps. And to kind of, and if you're curious about what that all takes, much like the Citizens Academy that Mr. Bellamy mentioned, and our Sheriff's, Sheriff's Academy that our Sheriff's Department has, Newport News Water Works also has a, a Citizens Water Academy coming up here in a couple of months. It'll be Thursday evening, 6 to 8, October through mid-November. There's a little conflict with some other things going on. But if you're interested in what's happening behind the scenes at Newport News Water Works, it's a great opportunity for you to sign up for that. They have a 20 participants slots open. So if you're interested, go to Newport News Water Works. Off their main page, there's a button down below where it says Citizens News or Customers Newsletter. Click on that, and the information is all in there. So if you're interested in that, check that out, and I would recommend that. The second thing I had was coming of our board correspondence, I want to commend the staff looking in for cost-saving opportunities for how we broadcast these meetings and school board meetings and planning commission and so forth by moving to streaming services online. The one question I've had is, I have is, since we're going to a third-party provider, we no longer own that infrastructure. Is there a concern that our videos could be taken down for reasons outside of our control? And if so, how do we maintain them so that the public can continue viewing them? They're available for for your requests and all that? That's the only concern I have about the whole plan. Otherwise, it's great. But do we, have we thought about that concern, or?
All the video that we produce, as I recall, is actually saved on county servers as well. So we would have the ability, so if, if one of those providers stopped allowing local governments to broadcast, if you want to use that term, we would still have the opportunity to make that video available from our county website.
All right. Okay, good. All right. Mr. Wyatt, same.
Yeah, I want to make sure I had the affirmative on that.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Hallroy, thanks.
I had two, two quick ones. First of all, Queens Lake work got started today. They had the pre-bid meetings for the dam and the spillway work. So it's good progress. And second one, on behalf of the board, and certainly on behalf of the county, I want to offer my condolences to Mr. Drury and his family, loss of your father-in-law this week. So, welcome.
Mr. Drury.
Thank you, Doug, and for that. And I'll talk about that in a second. So I wanted to bring this up to the board. I've had several calls from people that are not happy that they see these electric vehicles being charged overnight at some of our electric stations. And they don't think it's fair to the citizens that they're getting free electricity when no one that drives a gas car does not get that. So I think that's something I think the board needs to take up, and we need to discuss what we think needs to be done about something like that. So I think it's, again, our job is to be equitable and fair to members of our county, our residents. And I think this is part of being equitable and fair. So I think that does need to be brought up to the board. Some, I'll echo what Mr. Bellamy said about Fourth of July. If you weren't there, it was very well attended. The parade was great, and all the kids were there, and all the flags were flying. And, you know, I say it every year, we live in the best place in the world to live. We really do. This is where our freedom was won. That's a big deal. We're, we're sitting in the old courthouse of where our freedom was won. And so I would encourage everyone to get involved and stay involved, to keep our county the best it is. And so if you attended those festivities on the Fourth, awesome. If you weren't able to make it, you missed quite a show. The other thing, I had the privilege to attend Chief Ski's retirement. He and I go back many, many years as kids, and his brothers and I were best of friends. And I was pretty much blown away by the magnitude of that celebration, if you will. It's, it's interesting to see, I've seen you, Mr. Baldwin, Chief Baldwin here before, but it's, I look back there for Chief Ski, and he's not there. So I did see him today at the funeral, and I said, I'll miss you tonight. So, but I was extremely blown away by the amount of people from all over, not just here locally, but from even way out of this area and other parts of the state. And he's definitely to be recognized. I told him at the end, of all the guys I know, all the people I know, I think Chief Ski has probably given more to this county over the years, to our Fire and Life Safety than anything I've ever seen. I used to be a part of that as a volunteer for 15 years. So I did a lot of training with them, and I had a great time doing that. And for him to be the chief, as, as far back as he was, looking at those pictures when he first became chief, he looked like a young, young, young lad. And so I think he's done a phenomenal job. And so I want him to be commended for that, as we've all done. Some other good news, I did a, we did ribbon cutting for Prim and Proper, some great friends of ours, yesterday at a hair salon. And so I'm excited about the businesses coming to York County. I don't know if you've noticed, but Q-Daddies is moving quite, quite along. And so hopefully, they're looking for a fall opening. You know, Virginia Beer Company's getting there. I know we're still getting complaints about what's taking them so long, but they're getting there. They're going to be open soon. Chick-fil-A is coming. We have permits, they've got their permits approved for that. Cookout is coming. We've got permits approved for that. So a lot good is going on in York County for businesses. And again, I've been beating this drum. The more businesses we can come, bring in to York County, the less it takes the burden of the taxes, taxes off of the taxpayers and the residents. So we should be excited about that. And last but not least, I do want to pay tribute to my father-in-law. What a great man. And I'm dressed for the occasion tonight, if you're wondering. He was a, he was a great guy, and he loved colors. And I'll tell you a quick story. My wife had gotten in a black blouse and white and black blouse this morning and black pants, and she's going to the funeral. I'm dressed like this. And I walk out of the closet, and I'm like, what are you doing? Going to a funeral in black? He would not want you in black. He would want you to celebrate his life. And so she went and changed colors to match my outfit. And, but that's why I wore these colors for my father-in-law. I do want to thank the administration and the board for the lovely peace lily. My wife and I are not green thumbs, but I- My wife and I are not green thumbs, but I was telling Mr. Bellamy earlier that the peace lily we got from someone else's passing, we've been able to keep that alive. So we're hoping that we'll be able to keep this second one alive, but it was beautiful, and I appreciate that. But just real quick, and I appreciate you obliging me, my father-in-law was like a second dad to me, a phenomenal man. And he taught me a lot about how to take care of your loved one. My mother-in-law passed in 2000 from a brain tumor, and she fought that battle for 12 years. And he retired from work early to be her caregiver, full-time, and he wouldn't leave her side. We'd go and say, "Dad, can you go play golf?" He'd say, "Nope, nobody will take care of her like I will." And for two and a half years, she was bedridden, and she never had one bed sore, because he rolled her every two hours like clockwork and rubbed her down in lotion. And that man stuck to his guns to take care of her, and he said, "Nobody else is going to do it like me." And that, that has said a lot to me over the years. And he's never had a cross word with me, and I've never had a cross word with him. He's like a second dad, and my hat and my tribute is off to him. And what just a great man, the best father-in-law that, that I could have ever, I couldn't have handpicked a better mother-in-law and father-in-law. So thank God for that. And I do thank you all for your prayers, your thoughts, and cards, and, and the calls that we've gotten. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Looking, looking at the time, I will save my comments perhaps till later. We'll now go into recess, and we'll be back at 7 o'clock.
Are these for the public hearings, which one?
Number one and then number two.
Parking, okay.
First one is national.
Now it's time for the public hearings and the first one that we have on the agenda is application UP 2148-25, Virginia Natural Gas, and I think, Jean, you've got this one.
Application submitted by Virginia Natural Gas is a request for a special use permit to authorize the establishment of a gas regulator station on an easement at 100 Centerra Circle. The purpose of a gas regulator station is to safely reduce high-pressure gas from the distribution pipeline to a lower manageable pressure for consumer use. The proposed regulator station would primarily serve the hospital, but it would also serve the nearby homes as well. I've included a couple of photos so you can see what a gas regulator station looks like. All right, the easement on which the gas regulator station is proposed is located on the approximately 83-acre Centerra Williamsburg Regional Medical Center property. The property is zoned EO for economic opportunity and designated economic opportunity in the comprehensive plan. The surrounding properties to the north, east, and west are zoned EO, while the properties to the south in James City County are zoned R2 for general residential and designated low-density residential in James City County's comprehensive plan. The easement where the gas regulator station is proposed to be located would be 70 by 100 foot and approximately 2/10 of an acre in size, located on the southeast side of the property along Old Moore Town Road, approximately 800 feet west of Warner Lane. According to section 24.1-243G of the zoning ordinance, where York County Commercial or Industrial District abuts property in an adjacent locality, which is in a residential zoning district, a transitional buffer shall be provided as if adjacent property were classified RC for resource conservation. In this case, the buffer will be located on the south side of the easement along Old Moore Town Road. A type 35 buffer is a 35-foot-wide landscaped yard area with evergreen trees and shrubs to achieve a minimum of one landscape credit for every linear foot. According to standards for all utility uses, section 24.1-493E, landscaping and screening appropriate to the use shall be provided in all cases, and especially when trees have been removed to accommodate the facility. Conditions of approval have been proposed that would require the facility to be enclosed by a board-on-board fence and the fence to be surrounded by evergreen trees with a planting size of not less than six feet in height and a species type that maintains branching to ground level. The fence would not be allowed to have barbed wire. The proposed gas regulator station would be required to adhere to section 24.1-493B. This section requires utility uses to be conducted so as not to produce hazardous, objectionable, or offensive conditions at or beyond property line boundaries by reason of odor, fume, lint, smoke, cinders, fume, noise, vibration, heat, glare, solid and liquid wastes, fire, or explosion. This will protect the residents living across Old Moore Town Road and James City County from the possibility of any external impacts. Furthermore, the county's Department of Fire and Life Safety has requested that a condition be included that would require VNG to ensure that proper identification signage detailing emergency response procedures be placed on the entrance gate. Section 24.1-493D of the zoning ordinance requires utility lines to be parallel to and contiguous with property lines unless accepted by the zoning administrator for good cause shown. This reduces the risk of landscaping, construction, or other activities interfering with the underground gas lines. The sketch plan submitted by the applicant shows the underground pipes running perpendicular from the regulator station to the southern property line. For the applicant, this was done in order to preserve more of the mature woods on either side of the regulator station. So the proposed gas regulator station is a critical utility necessary to serve the hospital and the surrounding community. While these facilities can be unattractive, staff believe the proposed conditions of approval to screen the facility using a board-on-board fence and evergreen trees will mitigate this issue. Furthermore, the transitional buffer will provide distance and a vegetative buffer between the facility and the existing residential community in James City County. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this application, subject to the conditions set forth in proposed resolution number R25-103. The planning commission heard this application during their June 11 meeting and voted 5 to 0, with Mr. Kreiner and Mr. Smith absent to recommend approval. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and the applicants are here to answer your questions as well.
Stephen, you have a question?
One question. Is the area served by Virginia Natural Gas today, or is this new service?
I believe they're already served by that, by Virginia Natural Gas, but the applicant is here to answer that definitively for you.
Okay, yeah, let me, yeah, so, yeah.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Dennis DeVosia. I'm an engineer for Virginia Natural Gas, and yes, Lee.
Use the microphone, please.
Sorry. My name is Dennis DeVosia. Good evening. The area, to answer your question, is currently served by Virginia Natural Gas.
All right, so it hasn't needed the pressure station to this point, or the station to this point, or you're augmenting it with it? Why do you need this now?
Absolutely. Excellent question. So there is an existing feed to the area. We periodically review our system to ensure that there are no one-way feeds to critical infrastructure. During one of these reviews, the hospital was brought up as having a singular feed to the area. This is to create a redundant backfeed to the area, most notably the hospital, so in the event of any issue that it would have redundancy to the system.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Excuse me, are you Mr. Summers?
No, Mr. Summers is with me also. He's our regional director, yes.
Anybody else have a question?
Just to answer curiosity here, so it looks like the pipes for the regulators, or the regulators are underground, right? Are they under the ground or are they above the ground?
The pipes going to and from the facility are below ground.
Okay.
At the facility, inside the fence, they will be above ground.
So the regulators above, and so I noticed that there's like two regulators and a bypass.
Yes.
So what's the bypass for?
So the bypass is for two reasons. One is for additional growth in the area, so we don't have to run a third line, and then also for any issues on our system. If we have to take a line down for any service, we can feed it straight through without the regulation.
And so what are the two bypasses for?
So there's one by-
I mean, not the bypass, but the two regulators.
So the two runs, one is a primary run, one is a secondary run. It's just meant, just for a, that's how we operate it. It's for redundancy in the system.
I thought that was, yeah, I thought that was the case when I looked at it. And so the pressure on the line going to a building is like about two pounds?
So going to an actual meter outside the building is 60 pounds PSI.
Outside the building.
Outside the building.
Wow.
At the building determines on what the building needs. A standard residential would be seven inches of water column, and then-
I don't know what that means.
Quarter PSI.
Okay.
And then commercial is all two PSI or five PSI.
So at the regulator, though, coming in from the supplier, though, the pressure's pretty high then, I guess.
So this station would cut pressure down from 150 PSI to 60 PSI to distribute it to customers, and then it would be cut again at the customer's meter-set building wall.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Excuse me, for the record, please, would you give me your name and address?
Yes, my name is Dennis DeVosia. I'm an engineer for Virginia Natural Gas. Corporate office address is 544 South Independence Boulevard, Virginia Beach, Virginia 23452.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? Do you have a question?
I'll save it for the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. I think, I'll-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no questions from the board, I'll open the public hearing, and the first person that I have signed up is Brendan Summers.
Is the applicant.
So I think Mr. DeVosia was able to answer some of the questions for us. He was sort of the second act, but took over, so I yield my time, unless there are specific questions for me. I'm the regional director for Virginia Natural Gas for the Yorktown Peninsula Region.
Do you have questions?
No, I'll ask my questions. I said, no, I'll ask my questions. So I have been, I've conversed with the applicant this past week. I had several questions regarding, again, why are we installing this? It's really a backup system, but the primary system comes from Lightfoot Road right at the railway tracks in Wawa, and it is subject to shutdowns occasionally due to construction activities.
Redundancy.
That's what, absolutely.
So it does make sense that there's a secondary system. What I was concerned about was, is there any possibility of atmospheric relief off of these regulators? I've had that answered satisfactorily. This is a closed system. There is no atmospheric release. It's a double contingency or dual operating system that triggers shutdown in pressure if there's a rise in pressure in the downstream piping. I was concerned because Centerra is such a large user of gas. If they close their emergency shutdown valve quickly, the pressure could rocket up pretty high and very fast. There are no other users in that area. Satisfied with the calculations of the valves and the CVs that, in fact, it has been designed for exactly that case. So I think, I think everything I've seen would suggest that this is very safe design. I did have one follow-up question. What do we have in terms of leak detection at the site of the regulator?
Absolutely. I believe we have some monitor regulators, is that right, Dennis? Yeah, monitor regulators, gas control, which is being monitored 24 hours a day, 365 days a year.
And you have the ability to shut down remotely?
That one we do. We not, we not, okay, don't have that one. We know when the pressure rises, which will provide an alarm to us.
Is there an automatic shut-off if the pressure gets too high?
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
There is no automatic shut-off if the pressure gets too high. The automatic safety is the second safety, the monitor regulator, which would, if the pressure gets too high, which would overtake. So in a steady state, the monitor regulator is monitoring the pressure with the worker regulator working and reducing pressure. In a failed situation, with one failure, the worker, the monitor would be monitoring the pressure and understand that the worker failed and send pressure still below 60 PSI to the system. So in a normal operation, it's a 60 PSI MAOP, which is maximum allowable operating pressure. In a normal system, we're running about 53, 54 PSI. In the event of a failure, we would go up to 58, 59, which is still below our rated capacity of the pipeline.
My question was an external leak.
For an external leak, so there would be, there is a flow monitor on the system, so in the event of an external leak that was excessive, gas control, which is monitoring the flow, would notice the flow raise up significantly and notify us. As far as also other leaks in the area, we do have leak survey, which is a continuous year-round operation where they, where our map and our pipeline are put into grids and are constantly surveyed over the area on a routine basis.
You have those little sniffers, don't you? Kind of go around and you can sniff it on the ground and tell where the leak's coming from.
Absolutely.
That's my technical term, a sniffer, right? But anyway, I've seen that in operation, and you fix them.
Well, what's your MOP if you detect an overpressure situation? You don't, you don't have a pop valve to purge the atmosphere locally, so?
No, so we try not to purge to atmosphere, just for environmental reasons, for safety reasons, so it will still be below 60.
But how, but if it rises above 60, how do you mitigate that?
If it rises above 60, then that would have, two things would have failed in the time it took us to get there.
Okay, so what do you do if that happens?
That would go into the pipe there. It would not be relieved to the atmosphere.
Okay, but where's the pressure go then?
In the pipe itself. It-
The pipes can-
I don't want to engineer this for you, but we've got above-ground natural gas and-
Yes.
We don't need, you know, a burst there above ground, so.
No, so this is, this is how it's done all over the country. So there's really three methods of protect, two methods of protection. One is, in the event of a failure, to relieve it all to atmosphere. You do have the environmental concerns associated with it, the risk, the noise, all of that. The second option is to have a monitor regulator. It's kind of like a, to have an analogy, like a dual-engine aircraft. If one engine fails, you do have a backup, and that's kind of how it, it's a monitor regulator.
Okay, all right.
And the piping itself is designed such that a 10% overpressure is permitted.
Okay.
So you'd have to get to 72 pounds before-
Excuse me, are there any more questions?
So, yeah, real quick, so-
You have one, go for it.
Yeah, if you do have an external leak, you have to have someone physically go out there to shut that down, to shut-
Yes, yes. So this is built with inlet and outlet valves a distance away from the station, close to the edge of curb, so in the event of, just for a tertiary backup, we are able to shut the site out, shut the site off without entering the site physically.
Yeah, I would assume that, yes. I guess I'm just surprised that in modern technology that there, you guys don't have an electronic shut-off that you could do from a remote area or an office or electronic room.
Yes, so the problem with that is, while it does exist, nobody, most people don't typically utilize an electronic shut-off because it would immediately cut off gas in the event of a failure. So if you guys have gas, you could probably count on your hand the few times you've lost gas outage, you've had a gas outage at your house, as opposed to having a power outage at your house. So in the event of a gas outage, it's a little bit more critical for us. We do have to physically go to each individual premise, turn the meter off, and then activate it back on. So we don't have any, so that way, nobody has any standing pilots left a stove on or cause an issue. So it's a lot more sensitive to maintain gas pressure while we're doing work throughout our oper-
Especially to a hospital, right?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak in this public hearing? You would like to know. Fine, thank you. If I don't see anybody else who would care to speak to this, I'll close the public hearing, and what's the pleasure of the board?
Quick comment, if I could, please. I want to say something about Virginia Natural Gas. I mean, for those of, you know, we, there's always concern dealing with gas. I saw, I saw an apartment blow up once, okay? I mean, I didn't see it, I was asleep, and that's how I found out about it. And that's fine, you know, and that's not fine, but the thing is, Virginia Natural Gas has just been a great-
Oh, sure they have.
-great partner in the county. I just, I go back to Isabel, and, you know, no, no power, no power, right? People, they're all working on electricity. It was Virginia Natural Gas that was there to keep the, keep the hot water heaters going and stuff like that, and it's, they're in the wintertime. So you guys have really done a great job, and I appreciate that. So I will move the resolution.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Shepherd is to adopt proposed resolution R25-103 to approve the application as submitted. Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. The next item we have, is Caitlin going to do it, or are you going to do it?
Actually, I'm going to do it. Ms. Abbott had to run home. She has a sick child that's going to the emergency room, so we're going to, I'm going to step in and hopefully do a great job for you guys tonight.
Good luck. Good luck taking her place, all right.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Drury. I will try to, try to do well here.
And this is the application for the planning commission? Go ahead.
Yes, this is for parking amendments that are being proposed to be changed here in the county code. So just an overview, we are looking at a variety of different changes that we've seen as we've had day-to-day operations within different uses that we've seen, whether it's residential or commercial, and we're trying to provide some different ways of addressing the parking situations that we've noticed happening in the county. So as far as the residential classifications, we have noticed that a lot of people don't use their garages, and we allow people, when they're doing developments, to count a garage as a full space. So we have reduced that down to a half credit for a garage, and this will kind of help with it. You can see this situation here, where you've got two cars sitting outside. Unfortunately, the garage door's not open, so we're not sure if it's full enough, and they're probably not using it. But the new changes will bring that down to a half credit, giving more ability to do that. We've also increased the visitor parking requirements in the townhome apartment-style developments, and that way, there's more parking spaces, just in case, you know, someone moves into a townhome in this situation where you've only got two spaces in a garage, and then you've got two teenagers who are also driving a car. There's more opportunities for visitor spaces there, so the ordinance addresses that also. All right, and we also looked at the community uses. So these are different uses that we're looking at here right now. Right now, we also include in here fixed seating, and so we're removing that piece out of the ordinance and just going with an assembly area rather than having to count seats and so forth. And this is for a variety of different uses that go on out there. We felt that the assembly area count would be much better than trying to count the number of chairs and stuff that they can fit in there. And also with the public, one of the public park recommendations was an outdated resource that we could no longer find, so we worked with the Parks and Rec Department to come up with a better number to put on parking spaces, and so you can see that those are reflected in there, where we require 80, let's see, it's 80 spaces for a sports field, or if there's a playground, it's one space for 1,000 square feet, and three spaces for different, you know, larger park spaces. In business and professional, we've seen some changes to ATMs. We've got a lot of drive-up and walk-up ATMs, and so we wanted to differentiate between those two uses, because if you're walking up to an ATM, you need a parking spot, but if it's a drive-up ATM, there's really no need for a parking spot, because most of them are in a parking area of some kind, so most people aren't parking their car and going up to a drive-up ATM. So we changed that. And we also distinguished between different food, fast-food establishments when it came to drive-in, drive-through, and the number of stacking spaces. We saw this with the new cookout that we have coming, and we, you know, tried to work with them to better adjust how many stacking spaces they had. As we see a lot of these fast-food restaurants, they're increasing their number of drive-throughs that they have, so, you know, like Chick-fil-A, I think they have four now, the one in Victory, and some of them have even more. I think the one up in Williamsburg, that's not us, but they have like five. So it's just increasing things, so we did some adjustments to that to kind of, to work with that. And we also put some adjustments in here between a standard car wash that you would just, like the example here at the top, where you would pull up to a vacuum, vacuum your car, then pull in and wash the car yourself, and that of a tunnel car wash. And we've also added some regulations for window and detailing, window, no, it's not window detailing, it's detailing and vinyl, vinyl wrap and window tinting. There we go, sorry, I just saw it.
Yeah, I got it.
Because that was a new use we added to the ordinance with the housekeeping amendments last year, and so we wanted to make sure that we were, we forgot to put any kind of parking requirements for them, so we've added that in there. All right. So we also did some terminology updates when it came to different uses, because we had, in the housekeeping amendments, put boats into recreational vehicles, so we cleaned up that language, and we cleaned up some of the language, how we refer to mini storage warehouses. Instead of cubicles, they're units. Cubicles is a holdover term from past years. Most places call it units now. So we are recommending approval of these different things. I'm going to kind of skip through here, variety of different changes that we've presented you tonight, and the planning commission did review this, and they recommended, recommended approval of it. So we are, we would also recommend approval of it from staff perspective, and you can do that through ordinance number 25-17. I apologize for the disjointed presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Shepherd.
Can you go to your first slide, please?
Yes, sir.
Next one, one that has picture, okay. Looking at that, just on the screen here, okay.
Sorry.
I'm looking at the picture down here at the bottom, and we talk about the half-space and all this.
Got all kinds of fancy stuff in these new presentations. There we go.
Okay, so the picture on the left, the car, they're trying to get two cars up in there.
Right.
You know, I'm kind of wondering, in our planning here, why put a sidewalk in a place like this if you're going to block the sidewalk? I'm trying to think, people, people walk down sidewalk, and you've got a car across this. Is, what would drive, I mean, what's driving that? Is that we're forcing people to have to be in the driveway, and yet we block a sidewalk that they're spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to build, to have in there? Are they not allowed to park in the street?
That's Whittaker's Mill, and there is absolutely no parking in the streets or for visitors. It was built so tightly, there's literally no place to park.
Yeah.
So they're, they're doing exactly that. They're parking on the sidewalk all over that place.
Well, I'm just wondering how this ordinance we're doing here, is it going to be able to help to address that kind of problem?
That is the hope with the additional parking requirements required for each unit, that, you know, we, and we are looking at extending the driveway requirement length, because vehicles are larger now sometimes, and, you know, even if you had a very large extended cab truck, it's going to block that sidewalk. And so these are the kinds of things we've seen in different neighborhoods, and we are trying to solve the problem. This is kind of the first step with the parking piece, is requiring more parking for these, any new developments that will come forward. We really can't, unfortunately, go back and address the old stuff that's already approved and been out there, but it's kind of a lessons learned thing.
So, so in looking at picture, what is this, do you have any idea what the setback is on that apartment, on the, that's a townhouse against?
I think these were 20 feet.
See, this, so that kind of hits me, that we, that we have been convinced that this is a good thing, okay? When we need to build an apartment that's set back far enough that people can get into their driveway or be able to park, I mean, this is kind of, to me, it's just a waste to see, we know people are going to have two cars. If they've got two people in the house, everybody's going to have a car, and you address that in this ordinance, but it just, it just, it's, what an absolute waste to have a situation where you've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on concrete and sidewalks here to block it so that you can't, it's better to walk in the street than it is on that, so.
Unfortunately, you're correct, and we are going to try with this new, to make it a little bit better situation.
Well, we just don't approve any more setbacks that are only 20 feet or 25 feet. Stop that right around for that. I mean, I know developers want more space, or want to cram more houses and spaces like this, but that's a design, is just, to me, right off the bat, it's a failure.
Well, also, vehicles have gotten a lot larger.
In some cases, yes.
And take up a lot more room than when you set this up originally, so.
Yes, and we thought that people would use their garages, too.
We're just moving forward on it anymore. Do you have a question?
Well, yeah, the part of that is, people are using their garages for their lawnmowers and their rakes and hoes and all that stuff, and they're not using it for vehicles. So to me, we're always going to have this problem. Honestly, unless you push that thing back about 30 feet, where you can park two cars, because everybody has two cars and their garage is full. Very few of those townhouses that people have, they park their car in there if they have a-
Well, I mean, it goes to us to, I mean, I remember, but remember Doug, I'm talking to the supervisor, Sheila, so when the, when Doug come up, we were talking about, remember we were talking about parking spaces here? And, and then we're starting to see this now, okay? So I'm just going like, why in the hell would we approve something like that? I mean, I got to go back and think about it. Why in the hell approve something like that?
That's a good question.
So anyway.
Thank you.
It's Arbordale.
Stephen, do you have a question?
I have two real quick. So going back to the stack-in restaurants, restaurants that are predominantly drive-through as opposed to dine-in, are we addressing the number of parking spaces for those types of restaurants versus dine-in restaurants, or are we all still, we're treating them all still the same?
No, no, we're treating them different. Like the cookout, we didn't have anything in our current ordinance, because they were only, they only had employees, and so we have addressed that in K, category 11, number 12. We've changed it from five spaces to actually having one, one and one-third space for every employee on the largest shift, so.
Right, but that was for places like Cookout, that doesn't really have any dine-in, but when you have like a Chick-fil-A that has two or four drive-through lanes or pick up your callhead order, where most of that traffic is coming as opposed to dine-in, are we thinking about reducing the number of required spots for restaurants like that, or?
No, we didn't reduce the number of the required parking spaces that they would be having, because they still do have dine-in services, but we have changed how we talk about the stacking lanes and how many spaces they have to set aside to be able to get cars on their property and stacked in there for the drive-through itself.
All right, and last question, and this goes where we were just talking about size of vehicles. I didn't really see anywhere in the ordinance, maybe I missed it, that talked about the physical size of the parking space. Were we making any changes to that?
Not, not at this point. We are looking at that. We're trying to find, figure out how best to address that, the question that Mr. Shepherd brought up. And, you know, if you got two cars parked there like that, that's problematic. So, we are looking at it. We know it's a problem. So, we are trying to figure it out. We just haven't come up with a good solution yet.
The concern I have is, this may drive developers to squeeze more smaller parking spaces in to accommodate the need for more parking spaces, but they're not really big enough to be, be useful. We want to avoid that as well.
Right. I mean, we have our standard nine-by-eighteen space that they would still have to meet. So, if they had two, they'd have to have two nine-by-eighteen spaces. But, I mean, it doesn't really address the large extended cab trucks and, you know, places where you have, you know, one driveway that's not long enough for the two vehicles kind of thing.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Holroyd has questions.
Well, I've been harping on PDMU design for quite some time, particularly related to parking. We've got Yorktown Crescent, we've got Whittaker's Mill, we've got Arbordale, we've got Kelton Station. All of them are, are woefully absent or lacking in terms of parking. So, we've got, we've got, we've got a problem across the county in terms of every, every one of the new developments we've approved. This goes somewhere, some ways towards addressing that, so I'm thankful for that. Does it do enough for the PDMU design? That would be my one question.
I think so because a lot of times we fall back on, you know, the regulations in here. And if we're looking at the townhouse, townhomes, and we've increased, you know, that, the townhome requirement, we've increased the apartment requirement. And, you know, it's kind of a lesson learned. We've looked at all these developments that we've had. We see that there are problems with them, especially with the parking, the width of the roads sometimes. And, and I think you'd be hard-pressed to see us approving a PDMU in the future that wouldn't address more those pieces.
You wouldn't see me approving it.
Recommending approval from the staff. You are correct, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who cares to speak to this issue? I have one person here. Ron Struble. Where are you? Oh, there you are. Okay.
Ron Struble, two zero five, Shady Bluff Point. I think most of my comments have already been discussed up here by the board. I just want to share a quick story. You know, it's been over four years, almost four and a half years since Fenton Mill application came to this board. And I remember when we hired our, our second lawyer, our first lawyer didn't work out like we wanted. Our second lawyer was from Richmond, very, very experienced in zoning codes. He came from Chesterfield County. And we were all fired up about Fenton Mill and what can we do and this and that. And he looked it over, and about a week later, he called me. He said, "Ron, your problem's not Fenton Mill, your problem's your zoning code." He said, "Your zoning code is about fifty years out of date, and it just hasn't kept up with the times." And we've been harping on this, and Mr. Holroyd and I have talked about, Mr. Roan and I have talked about it, we've, a bunch of us have talked about it. And I'm just so appreciative that we're taking the proactive steps right now to start to fix some of the problems in our zoning code. This is the first step. There's issues with open space, there's other issues with standards. But I love this first step, and I wanted to thank Mr. Bellamy, Mr. Anderson, the supervisors, the planning commission, for just taking the time to tack, start to tackle some of these issues in our zoning code. Mr. Shepherd, I love your idea of setbacks. My son lives in Whittaker's Mill. I've got pictures after pictures of cars sticking out in that street, three, four feet. No parking signs everywhere with cars parked everywhere, impossible to get around. And I just ask myself when I see that, how does this happen? You know, how did this happen? And tonight, we're starting to take a step, at least in the future, for stopping some of this stuff from happening. And I just wrote a quick note where I know these problems exist. Kelton Station, Yorktown Crescent, Nelson's Grant, I think to some degree, Whittaker's Mill, Burgess's Quarters, Arbordale, and most of those are up in, in the upper county where most of the development is happening these days. So, thank you. I recommend, I, I ask you to approve these changes, and I hope we can look forward to some more changes to our zoning code and improvements in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anybody else who cares to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the board? Someone wants to move?
Madam Chair, I move resolution.
Ordinance twenty-five dash seventeen.
It's ordinance, ordinance twenty-five seventeen. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Holroyd is to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-five dash seventeen to approve amendments to section twenty-four point one dash six oh six, minimum off-street parking and loading requirements of the York County Code. Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Okay. The next item is revisions to propose amendments to section nineteen dash six of the York County Code. Okay? Change?
Hey. So, this presentation is to consider amendments to section nineteen dash six of the York County Code regarding overgrowth of shrubs, trees, and other such vegetation. I'm gonna start by giving you some background information. So, at its February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting, the board conducted a public hearing regarding proposed amendments to section nineteen dash six of the County Code regarding the maintenance of overgrown shrubs, trees, and other such vegetation, including noxious weeds, vines, and ivy, which is collectively referred to as overgrowth. The board continued the public hearing until its June seventeenth meeting and requested an intervening work session on the matter on June third. There was a discussion at the work session about the purpose of the proposed amendments, enforcement actions, appropriate notice, timeframes, and applicability to different situations. At its June seventeenth meeting, the board continued the public hearing until today, July fifteenth. Staff revised the proposed ordinance based on the feedback we received during the meetings. Before I discuss the revisions, I want to go over the amendments as originally proposed. The proposed amendments identified five situations in which the property owner has a duty to remove overgrowth. Number one, the overgrowth obstructs the view of address numerals on the building, on buildings or mailboxes. Overgrowth that obstructs address numerals can pose a threat to public safety because emergency services rely on address numerals to locate properties. The overgrowth blocks or obstructs pedestrian or vehicular traffic on public rights-of-way. The overgrowth obstructs the view of oncoming traffic at intersections or for vehicles exiting a driveway. Number four is the overgrowth obstructs access to emergency escape and rescue opening points as defined by Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code or path of travel from any street to the primary entrance of any primary or accessory structure. Or number five, the overgrowth is growing into or on primary or accessory buildings in a manner that is detrimental to the building or has caused damage to a building. The amendments would apply to occupied or vacant developed real property. If the property were undeveloped in its natural state, the proposed regulations would not apply. The section nineteen dash six already lays out penalties for violations relating to trash accumulation, tall grass or weeds, and running bamboo. The same penalties would apply to noncompliance with the proposed overgrowth provisions. The provisions allow the county to investigate conditions existing on any real property in the county at any time and establish that the owner and the person primarily responsible for the property, if different from the owner, must receive written notice of the violation. The violation notice gives the owner or responsible party seven days to rectify the violation. If the owner or responsible party fails to comply, the county will abate the offending condition and bill the property owner for the work. If the property owner fails to pay the bill within fifteen days, the county treasurer will place a lien against the property. So, following the feedback we received from you at the June third and June seventeenth meetings, staff made three revisions to the proposed amendments. Let's get into the first one. The five situational criteria were designed to ensure public health and safety in regard to overgrown vegetation on properties and were intended to address situations beyond unsafe structures, which the building code currently regulates. There was general agreement regarding the first four proposed criteria. However, the board agreed that the fifth criterion, which requires overgrowth to be growing onto or in a building to the point of causing damage, required clarification as to the damage caused by the overgrowth constituted an unsafe structure that could lead to condemnation under the provisions of the building code, or if it constituted a nuisance as defined by section fifteen point two dash nine hundred of the Code of Virginia. The Code of Virginia allows the abatement or removal of nuisances by localities and defines a nuisance in this case as structures which constitute a menace to the health and safety of the occupants thereof or the public. The threshold for the fifth criteria has been revised to require a finding by the county administrator, the condition of a building affected by overgrowth is such that it constitutes a nuisance. This could provide additional guardrails to concerns over property rights. Revision number two, there was a board, there was board discussion about the length of time following an issuance of a notice of violation that is provided to a property owner to abate an overgrowth violation before action is taken by the county to remove the overgrowth. The initial length of time to abate an overgrowth violation was seven days from the date of notice, which means seven days from the date the letter was mailed, mirroring the time afforded to property owners who receive notices of violation for overgrown grass and weeds. The board agreed that seven days to abate overgrowth was too short, given the trimming, given that trimming and removing overgrown trees and shrubs generally takes more time than mowing and can require coordination with a landscaper. The board suggested that the time a property owner must abate an overgrowth violation should be changed from thirty days from the date of issuance of a notice of violation, which means thirty days from the date the letter was received. And while all notices of violation are sent by certified mail through the U.S. Postal Service, which provides proof of delivery or attempted delivery, not all notices can be delivered. The county's zoning and code enforcement officers make every attempt to work with a property owner to correct a violation before taking official action. But the ordinance language must be written in such a way that addresses situations with unresponsive or hostile property owners who won't accept the delivery of such a notice of violation. Therefore, staff proposes that the time of a property owner must abate an overgrowth violation should be thirty days from the date of notice, which is thirty days from the date the letter was mailed. So, moving on to the last revision, if approved, the amendments would only apply to occupied or developed, or vacant developed real property. At the June seventeenth meeting, the board expressed concerns regarding property rights and a desire to limit the reach of this amendment using one of two options. Number one, the duty to cut overgrowth of shrubs, trees, and other such vegetation be limited to those living in the Yorktown Village Activity or YVA zoning district. Or, number two, the duty to cut overgrowth of shrubs, trees, and other such vegetation be limited to those properties having both an area of twenty thousand square feet or less, and the primary structure is less than one hundred feet from a primary structure on an adjacent parcel. Both options are included in the first paragraph in proposed section nineteen dash six F in the proposed revised ordinance. The board may vote on a revised ordinance that omits at least one of these two options. So, I'm gonna close with staff's recommendation. With the changes suggested at the June third work session and the June seventeenth regular meeting incorporated, the proposed amendments to section nineteen dash six of the County Code will empower county officials to address citizen concerns regarding vegetation, overgrowth on properties that threaten the health and welfare of the community or constitute a nuisance as defined by the states, by the state code, with reasonable constraints. Therefore, staff recommends the board approve this amendment through the adoption of proposed revised ordinance number twenty-five dash six R two. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any, any questions?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I got a bunch of questions, but I gotta, Tim, come up here and fix this computer. Thing's gotta mind its own. I can't get to my, my stuff right now. So, go ahead with him, and I'll join, I'll join you in a minute.
Steven, you have some questions?
So, so, so two things. The ordinance is, proposed ordinance is written in section nine dash six F two and somewhat three. The overgrowth blocks the duty of owner to remove overgrowth that blocks or obstructs pedestrian or vehicle traffic on public right-of-way. Is that overgrowth that is outside of the right-of-way grown into it? Or is that also overgrowth that's, that's in the right-of-way itself?
Hold on one second, I'm just gonna read this. You're talking about F two, you said?
Yep.
An overgrowth box.
Yeah, so, and my question is, is that talking about growth that comes from the owner's property extended into the right-of-way? Or is that talking about overgrowth that is resident in the right-of-way itself?
Would be growth that's growing from the property and blocking into the right-of-way.
Okay. So, if, if the right-of-way itself needs attention, we are still gonna fall back on V-dots and they're, they're responsible for the right-of-way. Or if it's an immediate safety concern, we may reach out to our public works department and help us out before there's an issue. So, we're.
Yes, sir.
So, we're only, the duty is only limited to, from the yard, if you will, grown into the right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Second thing, the, the distinction between develop and/or developed vacant property and developed property, why is it okay for undeveloped property to create the same set of conditions that don't need attention by the property owner versus that does need attention if it's a developed piece of property? I mean, the, the same conditions can exist on undeveloped property that's grown into the right-of-way, what have you. But in this, the way this ordinance is written, the property owner doesn't need to take care of it. But if their neighbor who has a developed piece of property has the same problem, then we're gonna require them to take care of it. That doesn't seem balanced.
We, we addressed that with the change that you requested? Is that right?
And, yeah, so, so you're talking, so you're talking about mainly option two, option one would take care of the two, but mainly option two. So, so let's talk about, what does twenty thousand square foot look like as far as footprint?
Size of a small property?
So, like a third of an acre? What's, half an acre? About a half an acre? Okay. Okay. A quarter, quarter of an acre? Half, half an acre?
Just shot of a half.
All right. So, if you're living on a third acre or less, if you're living above that, not an issue and a hundred feet away from, so, my concern about the undeveloped property isn't applicable if we adopt option two?
Yeah, I believe, yes, I believe so.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'm, I'm on board with the safety aspects of this. We, we gotta make sure our first responders can get to the property, can identify the property as, as needed. I just don't wanna overburden.
No, I'm not.
Overreaching by the government to make people cut, cut their throats back. That's, that's an overreach, but I'm on board with the safety aspects of it. So, all right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I just want clarification. Is the planning department recommending option one or option two or both?
Yes.
Planning is giving you the two options that you requested. We're not recommending either one or it's up to you.
I'm looking for what your recommendation is, please.
Okay. We, we didn't provide one, but if, okay, either is fine.
Do you have a coin?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have a coin? Did you flip that?
Mr. Drury, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Tom, do you have some questions?
I'll try to do it from memory here. Okay, so, starting off, who's the, who is, there was a comment on the very beginning of this. It talked about, it was gonna determine something was unsafe. Who makes that determination in the county? I mean, it's, it's, to me, it was just very, it was just, it was a word thrown at there. Well, if this is unsafe, well, who makes that determination? Who, who is identifying unsafe?
That's the good question.
Well, okay. Administrator, okay, the, so, well, I, I didn't know whether it was the county administrator or some staff member, a staff member that worked for the county administrator. So, you're gonna get every one of these and approve every one of these?
I think this is. Or empower someone else to do it.
What? Okay, it just wasn't clear to me. Okay, I know it's in here, and it talks about, so, but I just can't see a county administrator doing it. Second of all, my sense is that, I come back to this concern, that we are, we're solving a problem, I wanna solve a problem for this district right here, one person. And I don't wanna put this all over the county. I got a real problem with this going all over the county. This is government overreach in my mind, okay? We, all you had to do is simply say, I agree with a lot of stuff that, that we can be addressed in here, but the, you know, having that, saying we gotta have this apply down in my district when it's only dealing with an issue up in, in Wayne's district, I, I just, I just not buying into this, all right? And a big part, if you got a location, you've identified some issues, you got a location, and we've got a, we got a, an organization here that in, in the village that can address this issue, all right? Put, and you can distance, so if you put it, if a hundred feet, now, I think it might be, the way I read this, for that problem you've got, Wayne, is that's across the road? Is it across the road from the house? Or is it next to the house?
No, it's across the road.
Wayne?
Yeah, it's across the road.
That's, all right, Sheila, I know I'm talking to the right guy. Okay, so, it's, it's across the road, but is it within, how many feet? Is it a hundred feet, two-hundred-and-fifty feet, five-hundred feet?
Probably a hundred-and-fifty.
Okay, so we can, for safety, we say within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. So if you got crappy-looking place, you're not taking care of it, you don't, it, it's, I, I like the idea that firefighter has to dig his way through the shrubbery to get into a house. I mean, I mean, that could apply anywhere, but a hundred-and-fifty feet, two-hundred-and-fifty feet parameters, okay? And put it in the homeowner association, this thing called, like a homeowner association, which is in there, is in your document. I don't need the rest of the county to have to suffer through this. I have a home in my neighborhood that's probably close to a million dollars that has vines growing all over the front of it, inside of it, that this ordinance, the neighbors could use it to have us go out and find them to take the vines off because it's growing into a window or growing into the, the, you know, the top of the house. I don't, I don't want that. That's not, I'm not gonna support that. I will support it taking what the tools we've got right now to address the problem they've got here. I don't get this problem anywhere else but in this neighborhood. So, I mean, I don't have everything I had written down here to talk about some of these issues, but you've got it included already in here. I just don't need to see this thing peanut butter spread all over the county. So that's, I feel pretty strongly about that because we're about to do stuff in here that, that can be used as a club by somebody living next door to them, okay? That could call the county, come out, and then we start all these penalties and everything, and I just don't see that. I've got houses that are, that are old houses that are collapsing, but neighbors are taking care of it. He happens to have a neighbor that's not taking care of their property, it's affecting the other neighbors, and I think we can address that without going all over the county with this.
So let me jump in. Let me jump in. First of all, this gives us the authority to address a problem, whether it's in my district or it could be in Doug's district or could be in anybody's district. We have the control up here if the county gets overreach. We have that to be able to call that out and go, no, that's overreach. We have the ability to do that. We're setting, we're asking them to give us an ordinance that if we have a problem like this in my district or your district, they can go out and address it. They're not gonna go out and address a vine growing up on somebody's house according to this. That's not what they're gonna do. They're looking for safety, for fire life safety, our police officers to be able to get in and out of a house safely. The roof could be, it could be an abandoned house where kids are playing, the roof falls in, one of the kids gets hurt. That's the kind of stuff that we're trying to address here. If we find out it's starting to be nitpicked by, by neighbors and stuff like that, we can shut that down. Like, that's not what this ordinance is about. We have the power to be able to do that. We get to call those shots. We're setting this ordinance up, they're telling us what they recommend, and if, if it gets too far one way and we don't feel like, I, I think everyone on this board is against government overreach, a hundred percent, me included. I'll be the first one to say a thousand percent, I'm against government overreach, but I'm for people taking care of their property for the safety of others, and that's what this addresses.
So Wayne, let me, to me, can I just, I gotta say something here. My experience on this board has been that homeowner associations and people not in homeowner associations will use the county as a club, okay? Whether it's a wetlands issue, whether it's, whether it's a home, whether it's just some, the apartment issue, they will use us, okay? And guess what? Yeah, we can change the ordinance, but, but by the time, this, the staff has to respond to the ordinances that are in place. They have to, they have to respond, and we can't come up here and just arbitrarily change an ordinance, because you change your ordinance, you got a whole public hearings, you gotta do all that stuff, and there's a long period of time. But in the meantime, this ordinance can be applied and penalties can be applied to the property owners of outside this area. So my concern is with this. I, I, that's why we've, we're really stuck with just the tall grass. Now, there's, there's code, we go out there, we find tall grass, we tell them, we, we do that, we put a lien on the property, we've even found other, we have to find code violations, and that's, that's a different story, but code violation, building separating without being properly built and stuff like that, and we've addressed those, okay? But when you, what we're talking about down here is, yeah, you know, a lot of homes in York County, although I think you're required to have, have a number, so people can identify, but a lot of them don't, okay? So now we're gonna go after everybody that doesn't have a number on a house, and, and, yeah, the one that I like was this thing about, you know, if it's all grown over the door and firefighters have to get in there, maybe rescue some kid that might be trapped in a basement or something, I can see that, but we don't address, what if you go up to a house that's just, it's, not collapsed, it's there, but you don't wanna go in store, you don't wanna go inside, why? Because the steps are gone, and you look inside and it's dark, and it's, and it doesn't take you more than about six inches to stick in your face in there, and you get the mold smelled, and, and you know this is, and there's boards sitting there with nails up all around it, and you go lean on the homeowner, this is what this county has done, and say, you come down and get rid of this thing, are you gonna fix it? And they, they do, they tear it down, they throw it down the building. I have never had a problem like you've got. I have never had that. I've seen abandoned houses that have been here for fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, even a hundred years, okay? But I've never had one where we had to go in there and, and face a problem like you got, and I agree with the person that's complaining. The person that has, is derelict on taking care of that property is affecting the value and safety, but I don't see this in the rest of the county, and I don't wanna apply any of these rules to the rest of the county because of that, but I wanna fix your problem. We can do this with space, distance, okay? To look, use the, 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 the historical district that we've set up the rules for, we can apply that here. I don't need it across the rest of the county. I mean, I've said my piece, so I'm...
So Tom, let me understand, you would agree with option one?
Put your, put your mic.
I don't agree with any of it.
I would, I would agree, I would agree if you, if you, if you address it as, like, almost like a homeowner association, which we, we have created here in the, in the overlay district. Again, this rule, this rule can be applied here specifically because we set the rules, and then the group here adjusts the rules, and that will go into effect across that road seventeen because they're part of the historical district, correct?
Yes.
So, okay, see, so we can solve that problem here without, without doing this across the whole county.
So pull up the two options, please?
If that addresses that.
So, so we have the ability with this to approve one through, one through five, only applicable to...
Option one.
To, in option one, which I think is what, what you're getting at.
Yeah. Now, if you, if you want to address the door issue about, you know, firefighter, police, the sheriff's department has to get into a building with the stuff over, over the door blocking access, I'd go along with that. You can apply that part across the county. I'll, I mean, we can add that, right?
Well, so, so look, look at the, the five criteria.
I wish I could.
Well, here you go, I got it, I got it right here. So, the first one is that, all it talks about is addressing the address numbers on the door. That's number one.
Okay.
Number two, we just clarified, and three, if you got growth on your property that's, that's going into the right-of-way that's blocking traffic, like, like the pictures, like that picture is showing, showing right there.
Right, but that, what you're looking at here, I agree, but what you're looking at here is right-of-way, okay? That is, that is a right-of-way, all right? That, that, that could be addressed by the county because we've put that sidewalk on, on the right-of-way, okay? But if it belonged to a homeowner association, then the homeowner association ought to get there and fix the problem. Or if it goes out into that street, okay, that's VDOT would come down and take care of it. Those are, I've done this many times, okay? And people call me up, Tom, can you get VDOT? Or if you got it growing over a speed limit sign or anything kinda like that, or if you pull out of a Kroger, Kroger shopping center, Kroger, you're trying to stick your nose out into Victory Boulevard, well, you can call VDOT, and you can raise, they'll go, they'll fix it, but we don't need to have, I, I don't know, at any time, in, in the twenty years I've been on this board, well, I had to go get a homeowner association to do this. I mean, not, not a homeowner association, but a, a personal, a personal property.
Okay, okay.
So what's the other one?
So, number four, that's access for, emergency access, all right? That's a safe vision.
I can go along with that one, that one makes sense.
You're good on one and four, and five, if it's so bad that the building has to be condemned, the county administrator can do something about it.
No.
I'm not sure what that means. What do you, I'm reading, I'm hearing you, I can't see this, okay? So, I, what I don't, here's what I don't want. I don't want this applied all across the county.
Okay.
All right? I mean, my option one up there is you take care of this problem here. If later on, I'd rather go with, if later on we start having a problem across the county, then we come back and do this, but right now...
Hopefully, it's in your district.
I'm like, I have it in my district.
So crawl, walk, run?
Right.
All right, so, what, what you're looking to do is apply these five criteria with option number one that addresses Mr. Drury's issue.
That's it, great idea, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Now they gotta get a computer, thank you.
All right, so the way that, way it's written now, it is one or the other in the verbiage, so do we select the revision to vote on? How, how do we want to?
Well, we have an option.
All right, so...
Option one or two.
So somebody's gonna propose real quick, it sounds like...
I'll make a proposed ordinance twenty-five dash six R three.
R three?
With option one being the proposed revision.
All right, and Mr. Drury, this is going to...
Option one, did you say?
Square, square thing that you need, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate your discussion, but you should hold your public hearing.
What'd he say?
Okay, well...
You should hold your public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, well, now we have something, something specific to have a public hearing on now.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I've opened the public hearing, if anybody would like to make some comments. Oh dear, I don't see anybody, so I'll close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Okay, so then I would like to move this ordinance with the revision that Mr. Drury, I mean, Mr. Holroyd recommended, which is R three now, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Would that be a revision or just option one?
It's revision three.
Revision three is option one.
Okay, got you.
Roll call, would you like to repeat that? Yes, roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Roan is to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-five dash six R three to amend section nineteen point six, maintenance of premises duty of owner within chapter nineteen of the York County Code with the incorporation of option number one.
Okay, question? I wanna make sure I know what I'm voting on here. Okay, is this option one is not gonna, it's gonna apply just to the historical Yorktown district, right?
Yorktown Village Activities on the district.
Yes, got it.
Okay.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
No.
Motion carried.
I think it's overreach. Okay, let's see. Public hearing number four has been pulled, so we need to come to item number seven, public hearing on monetary bonuses. Susan Goodwin, you have it.
Good evening. The most recent general assembly session approved a one-point-five percent bonus for state compensation board-funded full-time positions in the constitutional offices of the treasurer, commissioner of revenue, clerk of court, Commonwealth attorney, and the sheriff. As the board is aware, each of those constitutional offices includes employees who are either partially or fully funded by the county. Historically, the board has ensured equal treatment of those employees regardless of their funding source in those offices. Accordingly, the ordinance for your consideration tonight would apply the one-and-a-half percent bonus to all employees, all full-time employees in those offices regardless of their funding source. In addition, the governor authorized a one-point-five percent increase, bonus, excuse me, for social services employees. The state requires that we adopt, the local governing body adopt a ordinance to approve payment of these bonuses. As such, we have prepared ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen for your approval tonight. If approved, those bonuses would be paid in July.
Any questions? Okay, do you have a question?
Ms. Goodwin?
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes, please. Could you tell us what the cost of this proposal would be?
Sure. For the state comp board offices, supported positions, it would be approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's the county portion. We would fund that from year-end surplus carryover. And then for the social services bonuses, it's about twenty thousand dollars, which could be absorbed in their current budget.
I'm sorry, and you were funding it from the first...
Their current budget, the social services fund.
No, the first one was...
The first one.
Uh, year-end surplus carryover.
Thank you.
Anybody ask any other questions? If not, I'll open, thank you, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would care to address this issue? See, none? I'll close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the board? Shall we move, who's gonna move it?
I'll move twenty-five nineteen.
Thank you, roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Roan is to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-five dash nineteen to authorize the payment of monetary bonuses to employees of York County. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next one we have is number eight, number seven. Okay, it's a vacation of county interest on an unpaved lane. Sherry, Casado, I think it's yours.
Yes, ma'am, and gentlemen, good evening. This is actually a private application, but I am speaking to you first just to get the context and set the stage for this. As you all are aware from your past experiences, the state code has a provision under which localities may vacate any or all of its existing interest in a particular roadway, lane, street, if that interest or that space is not considered to be of use to the county or of value to the citizens. This comes on private motion, as the state code allows for, and in the particular case, you're going to hear from Mr. George Clark, who has reached out to county officials in writing, asking for the vacation of an unpaved lane, which is extending between Cabin Creek and York Point Road roughly perpendicular to York Point Road. Mr. Clark first approached the county with a written request signed by one, two, three, four, five, six, seven adjoining property owners. There is one eighth adjoining property owner, and once it became apparent that his request would come to our agenda, I did, on behalf of the county staff, as is prescribed in the state code, send written notice to all property owners, including the one adjoining owner at four oh eight York Point Road, letting them know that this would be on the agenda and that this was the request of Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark is gonna speak to you in a moment, but what he is asking you to do is to vacate any possible existing county interest in a thirty-foot unpaved rock and grass lane between the creek and York Point. That lane was created by a plat in nineteen forty-three, by the way, that was part of the tract of land owned by the Banker Land Company, which would later become the York Point subdivision. The tract doesn't even indicate clearly that it is dedicated for public use. There were no conveying documents, no deeds, no other conveyances that I could locate among the land records that would confirm that it was actually confirmed to be donated for public use, but Mr. Clark, under the state statute, is asking to foreclose that entirely and asks that the, on his motion, that the county abandon any interest it may have. Haven't heard from anyone other than Mr. Clark and the written request signed by the other landowners. Stacy Smith is the owner of record, ladies and ma'am and sirs. I believe that property may be up for sale at this point. I think Mr. Clark's gonna tell you that he contacted, reached out to the neighbor and to the real estate agent who has a listing. I have received no phone calls, no emails, no written response, pro or con. And if you don't have any other questions about the general dynamic of the request, I can turn the floor over to Mr. Clark.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, thank you so much. Hi, George Clark, one oh three Cove.
Wait a minute, I'm opening the public hearing.
Oh, yes, ma'am, sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, George Clark.
I thought he was speaking as, as part of the applicant. No, he speaks as part of the applicant first, go ahead, please.
Yes, ma'am. All ready to go?
Go.
Yes, ma'am. George Clark, one oh three Cove Drive, Seaford, Virginia. Thank you for taking a look at this, what this property is, it's funny, and I really And I really have to thank the staff for their hard work on this, because if you look at the original plat of how this was written back in the '40s, it was literally written on a napkin. So that's what we're kind of dealing with. What it is, is I have ownership of seven lots. But are you all able to see the map? So all of the lots that are, you see the L shape? So to the, I actually call it the north or the east of those. Those are all lots that I own. Those have a, each and every one of those has a deeded access to this road. It's a gravel road. The property owner to the right does not have deeded access to it. So, but we still, they were reached out to. I did reach out to the real estate agent. I got no pros or cons about it, so I'm not sure where they stand on it. I guess if they, if they were going to fight it or had a problem with it, they would have responded in writing or been here, but I haven't heard from them. And I've tried to reach out to them repeatedly. Is there any questions you might have of me?
Anybody have any questions?
So George, all these lots are yours?
Yes, sir. Well, one is my mother's. I gave one to my mother years ago, yes.
But you own all the lots?
Yeah, I control all of them.
Except for 408?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I want to make sure, because it sounded like there was the owner of record. It was like multiple owners, so, okay, got it?
Well, I have a business partner and stuff, but yeah.
Sir, they are, in the sense that some of them are held as business entities and some in private capacity.
Yes.
So even though they are Mr. Clark's entities, they are distinct owners.
Yep, thank you for explaining that.
So the idea, I don't know whether you, Mr. Clark, or counsel, vacate the road and then the road will be split in half and half will go to the owner?
No, nothing's going to change whatsoever. The only thing is?
Who's going to own the road when it's all said and done?
It'll be put, it'll, I've requested to put it in my name personally at this point until I could put it into some sort of homeowners association at some point in the future.
Okay.
Where it'll be, you know, ownership in common by all of the properties.
But access to all that property?
They still, they still have their deeded access. Nothing's changing. The only thing that's changing is that I'd like to be able to maintain the road.
You can maintain the road.
That's it, nothing. There's, it's no impact. It's a gravel road that I'd like to be able to maintain, so.
The reason I ask is that in the past, we've done vacations like this. We basically split the road down the middle and the owners on one side of the road own that half of that road and the owner on the other side owns that half of the road. I was wondering if that was the same plan here?
No, 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 not at all. No, everybody, the deeded access will remain the same.
All right, so how does, how does that?
If I may, Madam Chair, this is one of those situations that we see throughout the county from time to time where we have a paper street, whatever you want to call it, that exists on some maps and potentially on GIS that we really don't know what if, what if any interest the county has. And as alluded to by Ms. Constantino, this was platted in the 1940s at a time when the requirements to dedicate roads were different than they are now. And there's no indication that this road was ever dedicated to the county. But because of the owner's desire to further develop these properties, he is requesting that we vacate to the extent that we have any interest and we're not indicating that we are certain that we do have an interest to enable him to essentially clear up what might be a very minor title.
Yes, sir.
And I'm happy to hand it over to an owner who wants to take care of it so the county is responsible to take care of it. I'm just wondering, at the end of the day, when that happens, is, does that road belong to a plat or?
I think the answer to that question is, is that Mr. Clark, in working with his attorneys and in working with whoever's going to help him with his plat, is going to have to figure out.
Okay, okay.
We'll figure out what kind of entity.
Best luck to you then, so.
What the ownership that remains, he'll have to figure out.
Okay.
Who gets what where. Okay, sounds good. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Any more questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Anybody wish to address this issue? See, no, no, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move resolution.
What'd you say?
I move it.
Roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Shepherd is to adopt proposed resolution R25-91 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2-2006, vacating county, county interest in right-of-way described therein. Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. The next item we have is application ZT-210-25. It's about indoor firing range.
Yes, ma'am. So, again, I'm up here before you, not Caitlin, so hopefully it'll be all right. So this request came from the board sponsorship memo that you gave us on your May 20th agenda. Basically looking at how we can add indoor firing ranges to the zoning ordinance. Specifically, the request was to look at the variety of different ways that that could happen. The main reason is Lafayette Gun Club, which is a legally non-conforming use here in the county, has an indoor firing range. It's a small range, but they would like to put it, tear it down and build a nice new facility. But they cannot expand any further than they have already. So to do that, this would put them in that special use permit category, which would bring them forward to you, require special use permits, those kinds of things. So the amendments would be to add to the RC zoning classification. Right now, those red highlights, that's where it is allowed right now. So an indoor firing range can be in the general business, limited industrial, and the general industrial categories only by special use permit. So it goes through the public process before planning commission and the board. And we have added it to the RC as a special use permit, and that's indoor only, not outdoor firing ranges. It's just the indoor one only that we've put in there. Right now, there are performance standards that do address the things that fall in that category for fire ranges, standards for fire ranges. And we're only looking at adding one exception in there, which would require a, basically a range master or range safety officer to supervise the indoor firing range. And that was at a request from the sheriff's department when they reviewed the ordinance. So the current ordinance addresses noise attenuation for indoor firing ranges. At 100 feet from any residential property line, you can, you're not supposed to be able to hear the indoor firing range at all. And they have to provide an engineered study on any, any indoor firing range that shows that they, there's no audible noise coming from the fire range 100 feet within any residential development. And then there's that safety officer requirement there. This is only an SUP, and we added that one standard. The planning commission did review it. We had no one speak at that public hearing, and they approved it five to zero. And staff is recommending approval to add this to the ordinance through ordinance number 25-18. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions to the board?
The certification for the range officer, who does the certifications?
I believe that is done by a outside organization. I think it's a federal organization. I'm not 100% sure who does the certification on there.
The NRA used to do it, the certification.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out. As long as you have some recognized weapons expert, range experts that are going to do the certification.
Yes, sir. We can do that.
Speaking of the RSO, so I think this is going to be a 24-hour facility with passkey access, access for members.
Now, I don't want to, I don't want to go in too much into what Lafayette Gun Club wants to do right now. I mean, I think we should wait until they submit their application to go into that. This is just, this ordinance will allow them to submit and then we can, they will submit that kind of information
All right, well.
with them. But I mean, if you're, if you're quite, I'm sorry, I kind of cut you off a little bit, I apologize.
What I was getting at is that the 24-hour facility, like the existing club is, with pass card access, key card access, and have an, despite having RSO on 24 by 7, which doesn't exist today, I'm kind of struggling with that a little bit. That wasn't, that wasn't part of the?
Yeah, we're not requiring them to be present. It's just that the firing range has one.
Okay, okay.
So that that, those programs can be implemented.
Okay, misunderstood, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. No, that was one of the things we were worried about too. And so we wanted to make sure it was, they have someone that's certified that can be there.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Any questions on this side? No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Earl, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this issue? If you do, come forward. Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to move 25-18, please.
Roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Roan is to adopt proposed ordinance number 25-18 to approve amendments to chapter 24.1 zoning ordinance of the York County Code to allow indoor firing ranges within the resource conservation district by special use permit and amend performance standards. Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. The next item is a towing board ordinance, and we have. Sherry, you're going to do this from where you are?
The presentation is what you had from Captain Houston. I don't have anything in addition to that. We just need a public hearing.
Okay.
And of course, Captain and I would be happy to answer any other questions you may have thought of.
I do have, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
And probably for Captain Houston, but whoever can answer, but. So as you're walking up, and I got Mr. Mahone helped me out with a lot of questions I had yesterday. We got a chance to get talking on the phone, so I appreciate his time yesterday, helped me out with questions. One question I have left is number 14, under, I think, under, under the fee schedule.
Yes, sir.
I just need some clarification. Where it says access to storage vehicle at certain times on certain days or third or subsequent occasion with regard to day or time. And then it talks about access Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. I'm just confused.
Yes, yes, sir. So this came from the towing members, that there's often times where people's vehicle is in the storage yard and they keep wanting to come back and get more stuff or enter the vehicle. And a lot of times, the tow company representatives are not there 24 hours a day. And people want to keep coming back and getting things or going through the car or looking for things. And it starts to create an undue problem for them because they keep having to drive maybe from their home to the shop or to the fenced-in area storage yard to keep having to open it up and let the people keep going back in the car. And that's where it comes into, they were requesting to be able to charge additional fees above and beyond and if it's outside of normal working hours, because the normal working hours have been set throughout the proposed county code to be Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. And that also mimics several other municipal codes, but also the state law, where it talks about normal working hours on Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, when it comes to towing and that anything after hours or nights and weekends and holidays, they can charge additional fees.
Right, and I'm on board with all that, because I can imagine a lot of churn. Just that verbiage, at certain times, on certain days, or a third or subsequent occasion. I don't understand what that verbiage means.
Maybe the county attorney can clear it up a little bit better. I know there's some legal terms in there.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Where are we looking here?
Page 11, at least, on the document I'm looking at.
Where's he reading?
Number four. 14, yeah, on page 11, yep.
Oh, that first line is just part of the title of that section, so to speak, meaning that section 14 is addressing access to stored vehicles at certain times and on certain days or on third or subsequent occasions. What this means is, that's the introductory line. And then the breakdown is this.
I get it, I get it now.
In addition to what Captain Houston said, they can go into the car up to two times during the week with no charge. If there's a third time, even if it's 8 to 5, there will be a charge. And then nights, weekends, and county holidays would always be a charge.
Okay.
So that's just part of the tagline, part of the identifying what we're talking about.
I get the context, okay. And was there, is there a need to defer the, the, when this takes effect?
We had put a projected date at the beginning of the draft. The sheriff's office wanted time to be able to be completely organized with website access, proper forms for the public to utilize, vetting. And you all can give us a different date if you like. I believe that we had put, I had put.
October 1st, 2025, okay.
October 1.
October 1, 2025, because the sheriff's office had asked for roughly 30 to 60 days to get everything in order.
Now, do we need to, do we need to separate that versus when the fee schedule gets applied? Or does it need to all happen?
It would all happen at once. When you, when it's passed October 1, everything comes into play. Nothing would come in prior to October 1. And I'll defer to the captain, but the sheriff's office really did want to have lead time to properly document the list, make sure that their forms are in order, that they're publicly accessible websites and phone numbers and emails are working.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. We have some questions, Mr. Holroyd.
Yeah, I had four questions that.
Yes, sir.
I had actually sent to Captain Houston and Ms. Constantino earlier today.
Yes, sir.
So I'll start with page 5, the administration of the police towing list. And I guess I'm struggling a little bit, because as your county board is now approving this ordinance, we have some ownership of that list. And I'm looking for, what is the process for us getting feedback on? Is it an acceptable list? Do we have some rogue operators out there that need to be removed from the list? How do we, how do we get informed of that? Do you come to us on some annual frequency or something like that? What do we need to have in place to ensure that we have qualified and ethical towers?
Yes, sir. So to begin with, the state of Virginia, the Department of Criminal Justice Services, also known as DCJS, they actually regulate the towing industry in Virginia that each towing operator that wants to be driving a tow truck has to go through a background check and submit fingerprints and go through a process. That's already set up by Virginia Code. So in order for them to be out there driving a tow truck and being legal, they have to go through the process through DCJS that's already set up. The predecessor to that was Betro, which was the Board of Towing and Recovery Operators, which they got rid of that for the state of Virginia, and now DCJS covers it. And you can actually go to their website and you can look up any person by their name to see if they are in good standing with DCJS and that they have a valid wrecker license to be able to do that.
Okay, so you don't feel a need to be coming back to this board at some frequency with that list or with the, with the, the past year's performance of that group of towers?
If it's the pleasure of the board, I don't have a problem coming back to you every year on the anniversary to give you an update of where we're at. If I'm the chairman or whoever the next chairman is, I don't mind doing that. I can bring you that information. It does say in the policy, the, I'm sorry, in the proposed code, that the companies and the business owners have to comply with all those provisions. They have to make sure their people are legal, that they do have the proper licensing set up by the state of Virginia. So it's up to the company owners to make sure that, or the owners of the company, that their people do have the proper licensing.
Okay.
One of the other things too, Doug, is in the dispute resolution, as you write through that, you know, if they have a dispute and it's on one of the towing companies, they'll get a written notice, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then the second time, they'll be put on a 30-day probation.
I'll come to that.
Okay.
You got another question?
I have three more.
He's got a longer list here, so.
So on page 11.
That's fine. And one thing, Ms. Constantino pointed out also, the towing advisory board itself can also bring those complaints up too if it's brought to their attention that somebody is operating outside of those guidelines.
Understood. So on page 11, on the standby fee, 30 minutes look like a very short period, particularly if it's a serious crash or you've got a extended police investigation or the coroner has to be called to the scene. It struck me that that's a rather tight limit for, for having to.
Yes, sir. So the intention is if we responded to a bad accident, say it's a fatality accident, we're going to be out there for two to three hours, much like we wouldn't call the, I'll say the removal service for a body. We wouldn't call the tow truck until we were close to the time that we were ready to clean up the scene. So we would freeze the scene, we would investigate it, our fatal accident reconstruction team would be there. And it may be two or three hours before we get to the point where we need the wrecker to remove the vehicle physically from the scene. So this is once we've called them to the scene, they are required to be there within 30 minutes or less for light duty, one hour or less for heavy duty wreckers. So once they arrive on scene, if we're not ready for them for some circumstance, they can begin billing after they've been waiting for 30 minutes on scene. So we wouldn't call them until we were ready for that point to clear the roadway.
Okay, thank you. On storage fees, my question was, are they in line with what insurance companies would expect?
I think that the fees are definitely consistent and probably at a level that are around this area. But it's been in my experience, the insurance companies don't want the vehicle to sit there any longer than necessary. They typically send out an adjuster within 24 to 48 hours. Because every day that it sits there, they're paying for a rental car for their customer. The car is not being repaired, which means it's longer for them to get back into making money. They're losing money at that point. So a lot of the times I see, they're sending an adjuster out and maybe having the vehicle removed before the first 24 hours because they want to limit those fees as much as possible. So as soon as their customer notifies them, they were in a crash, the vehicle is at this location, they're usually pretty quick about getting out there and getting this done to minimize their own expenses.
Okay, thank you. And I had one, one other point that's more for the board. Page 19, section 6, third offense. It states currently that it would be a two-year period. Well, that's, that's two-year period where a first offense, a second offense, and a third offense all have to occur in the same two-year period. And I, I basically feel that's entirely too tight. I think the third offense should be, the previous five years should be considered, not a two-year period. So if you, if your first offense and you haven't corrected your behavior, and second offense and you get a written reprimand, third offense comes up for the same towing company, I think they have to have a clean record for five years or they're dismissed from the list. That'd be my recommendation for the board. I don't think that's a question for you, sir.
I was thinking, I was just thinking about that. Are you suggesting you want? Are you suggesting you want to change the ordinance?
I would, I would change the ordinance on that point to be a five-year period instead of a two-year period.
So Captain, if I could.
First of all.
Could you address why you guys put that two-year?
Again, it was a collaboration from the members of the towing board wanting to see even discipline, even amongst, you know, the businesses. They want to make sure that if somebody is doing something wrong, that they are reprimanded for it and then there is a progression. Two years, I think is a long time to go because you see the toes that I put up previously, how many toes we're averaging a month. It's going to be a financial, it's going to be a financial hit for them if they're suspended from the rotation list for two years and not able to reapply until, you know, 24 months has passed. And then once they reapply, they have to go through the same process of.
No, sir, I wasn't referring to the two-year period of suspension. I was talking about in a five-year period if they get a third offense.
Oh, okay, sir. I'm sorry, I thought you were saying you want to move it to five years to be a five-year suspension.
No, no.
It was just over, it was again, it was a collaboration from the towing members on the board and we looked at other policies, other jurisdictions and municipalities and tried to stay consistent with what we saw around the area and the board voted on this.
I don't think you'd ever get to the point where you'd get three offenses through and cleared and documented in a two-year period.
I hope not.
So, Mr. Hallroyd, where do we, where do we make that, where do we make that amendment specifically?
It's on page 19.
Right. It sounds like, it looks like in four, five, and six, we need to change it from two to five?
Yeah, it's on number six, page 19, it's section.
Right.
Well, that says indefinitely, they'd be removed.
Section B, number six, third offense, upon finding a third offense within a period of five years.
All right, so just change.
The towing advisory board shall remove the tow operator from the towing list. This says indefinitely. The other proposal was a two-year period.
Okay, are you saying third offense changed that period of two years to five years?
So you're concerned about the two years or the indefinitely now?
I, I would have, I would have changed the indefinite as well to a two-year freeze on the, on the individual towing company if they had a third offense.
Well, this makes it worse. Indefinitely would be longer than two years.
Yeah, it's forever.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So wouldn't that?
Well, I, I judge that it had to be clean record for five years or they get a suspension. But the suspension should probably be less than indefinite.
Oh, you think so, okay.
All right, so you, you want to make an amendment to change that section from a period of five years to?
No, no, from a period of two years to five years.
You're talking, you're talking to, uh, section six, upon finding a third offense within a period of five years.
Within two years, right.
And would remove the tow operator from the police towing list for two years.
Two years, so that's, that's, that's your, that's the amendment you want to propose?
That'd be the recommendation I'd make for the board.
All right, but you're going to put that amendment forth as a revision?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so upon finding of the third offense within a period of five years, the towing advisory board shall remove the towing, the tow property from the police towing list for two years?
Two years.
Take out the indefinitely?
That's my recommendation.
Okay. How does the board feel? Do we want to?
Uh, we still have a public hearing.
We have to, I know, we need a public hearing.
I still have a question.
Any more questions before I open the public hearing?
No, I got everything.
Okay, let me, let me take kind of a different approach here to a couple, a concern. And Mark, and our attorney can pitch in on this if you, if you feel so inclined. All right, so, so we talk about having this, the board, an ordinance board, and you gave us at the very beginning of your, your presentation and the rationale for having, having a board, okay?
Yes, sir.
Give us the makeup of that board.
Of the personnel on the board?
No, get, the makeup of the board, that, who?
He did that.
We, we have established boards and we, at certain boards, we have requirements.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let me come back, me back up a little bit. Okay, who establishes this board?
The towing advisory board was established by the state law to give you the permission to generate one. And then I came before you.
Well, state law gives us, wait a minute, just don't, just don't get too crazy here. State law gives us permission to do everything we do.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we can't do anything without state law or the code. The House of Delegates, the government, governor approved it along with the Senate. Okay, so what I'm trying to say is who, who is establishing this board? Is it going to be, is it going to be the sheriff or is it going to be the board supervisors?
Board supervisors.
And you got to talk up here, so people, hey, you got to talk, you got to be at the mic.
You're correct, sir. This board of supervisors, one years ago, one year ago, created the board and established it. This board continues to remake, this board continues to keep control over how the seats are filled. You originally organized it with five seats, two to be members of the towing community, two individuals to be members of law enforcement, and one individual to be a private citizen at large.
So essentially, this is one of, I think we got, what, 26 boards?
This would be number 27, 28, yes, sir.
Okay, so this is one that, that we are responsible for as supervisors, right?
Yes.
And we created that last year.
Right.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Now, so this is kind of leading into my question. So in those boards, I only know of one board that has any kind of financial ties that, for example, the Wetlands Board can fine violators for $1,000. I don't know of any other board that we have that has any authority like that. Is there any, are you aware of any?
I believe Chesapeake Bay can do this.
Chesapeake Bay Board, yes, it can.
Okay, so that's related specific, but it's a very specific violation too within their parameters, right?
I, yes.
Okay.
Chesapeake Bay Board also has some enforcement authority as well.
Okay, so then let me, let's come back to the, so the makeup, that we said it would be basically two people from the public, right? Or, excuse me, it'd be two, two law enforcement folks, active, I guess they're active-duty law enforcement, right?
Yes, sir, two active law enforcement, two tow, two towers.
Two towing representatives.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then there's a, a civilian from the public.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, this is where I get into some concern about the checks and balances on something when you're dealing with money. Because we, we have a commissioner of revenue and we have a treasurer. Both are elected, both are counterchecks. One receives money, one distributes money, okay? So we're getting here now to a point where, where we are setting up all these parameters for towing. And let's, let's go back and just real quick, why are, why is almost half this, it seems to be half of this document tied with setting, setting these financial parameters? Why, why do we have that?
The financial parameters are designed to ensure transparent, consistent, and even application of fees to the citizenry when the citizens are forced to pay out of their pocket for towing services in situations where they had zero control over what company would be called. It has no effect or bearing on any private transaction between any citizen, any business, any tow operator outside of the police situation. I would make the rough analogy to a court-appointed attorney. When an individual is unable to get an attorney for themselves, the court, if they qualify, will give them one. The Supreme Court sets the fees that that attorney can charge and how they are then paid. The person who received the court-appointed attorney then must in turn reimburse the Supreme Court for at least a portion of those fees.
But when you're in, excuse me, excuse me for a second.
Yes, sir.
Let's go through, I'm going to go through alliteration on the law, but if you're in a situation like that, you've been arrested, right? You're not just showing up for the hell of it and I say I need an attorney because I'm going to sue somebody.
Right, yes, that's correct.
So you're, the tie, in this particular case, the police, because we've taken over the responsibility the state had for this, the state patrol, right? We're now doing this. We never had this before. And so that's why we create, we've gone, we've gone with this, so to kind of add some parameters to this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so in, where in the county, in a situation where we have regulated fees for a business?
It's in response.
Where are we regulating fees for a business? A business is supposed to be free enterprise, competitive business. Where have we ever related, where have we restricted a free enterprise operation?
I would not in any way characterize this as a restriction of free enterprise. What this is, is setting a limit on what the sheriff's office is willing to saddle a private individual. The individual who has to pay.
Wait a minute, no, wait a minute, I don't want to argue this point with you, okay? I mean, I'm not in the court of law here. What I'm trying to do is figure out why I'm doing this.
Yes, sir.
So I can understand we want to, we want to protect, we want to protect the, the community, all right? And we have a situation here. So why, why didn't we have a protection on retail for Lowe's and Home Depot? Why not have a protection Kroger or buying groceries? That's price, that's called price fixing, okay? And we're not doing that here. So, but, excuse me, but we sound like to me, that's exactly what we're doing. We're fixing the prices that this business, the businesses that we involve. And not only are we fixing the prices, we're also restricting who can play. And we're restricting it, we're restricting it by decision of the board. So where are, where are the checks and balances for this operation?
Well, Mr. Shepherd, another example would be what we were talking about earlier with the weeds and overgrowth and situations where we decide to mow somebody's lawn under our code, we hire somebody to do it, we control the cost of that and then pass it on to the individual.
How do we control the cost? By just saying we don't want to use that business.
Or we, or we basically.
But we don't go down there and tell them in writing that this board doesn't say that we're going to spend, you can only charge 50 bucks.
Well, no, but we, we obviously, if somebody comes in and says the cost is going to be some astronomical amount, we're not going to pay that and we're not going to use that.
Okay, so we're making a business decision here.
But that.
But this is making, I mean, we're affecting people's livelihoods, okay? So, so I'm just asking these questions, so we put it, put it in our minds what we're actually doing. Sheila, let me finish up, I don't want any comments until I finish this, okay? So the point I'm making here is that we're setting for a business, exactly what they can charge, that we think is the right cost. But we're not a business.
Can I address your example?
Sure, please.
Your example of, of businesses, Lowe's, Home Depot, the public has a choice. They go in and they don't like that cost, they don't have to buy there. They can go to Walmart, they can go somewhere else. This ordinance addresses situations that are out of their control. They've been in a traffic accident, we've taken care, charged with the vehicle, we call it a wrecker company, they had no choice in that whatsoever. And this regulates them to make sure that they get a fair deal.
And to expand upon what Sheriff Montgomery shared too, participation in that rotation is voluntary. If the, if a tow operator doesn't like the, the schedule of fees, they don't have to participate in it and they can operate it.
If you're involved in an accident and you tell us you want your own wrecker, we honor that. And whatever the cost is, you pay. In this situation, if you're injured and you're transported, we take control over it. This regulates that situation.
So this would be a situation where a person would be totally incapacitated or in a, or in a situation where they've been arrested and they can't participate?
Right, it's only in situations where law enforcement has taken charge of it and we're the ones calling.
Okay, so Sheriff, what I'm, what I'm concerned about here is that when you have a government agency that sits there and dictates prices on things and controls the money, you have a big influence. You influence the business. I mean, you think about it, you're influencing the business. The business, we, at any given point, you're controlling the business.
Well, what we're trying to regulate is fairness. We're making the playing field level.
I think that's oversimplification.
Tom, they're setting the standard.
I understand that, but I'm trying to stay, but my concern is the exposure of any potential view of corruption in our law enforcement, any potential view of, of corruption by the board here, because you're influencing the business.
No, sir. The board, the towing board was given this authority by this board to come up with these policies and the towing, the towing community had representatives on it as well. We listened to them and we, we regulated this along with other municipalities and localities and we're consistent. This only regulates those scenarios where law enforcement calls the towing company.
Okay, so why, why only 10 on the upper side, 10 on the, when you hit the upper end and lower end, you got 10. Why 10? Why not 12?
That was the, that was the advice of the towing advisory board, has a consensus that it would be regulated to no more than 10 companies.
Why?
Well, for one, right now, we only have six companies in the lower end on the light duty list and there's not many locations for them to have storage lots that are zoned appropriately. So there's very limited storage lots for the towing companies to be able to have. So quite frankly, it's very difficult for them to get a storage lot that's zoned appropriately for them to store vehicles and they're fighting for space right now. So getting to 10 would be very difficult for them with the current county zoning.
Okay, so me, okay, that's, that's a good point, fair, fair comment. Are all the members, are all the people on this list businesses located in York County?
No, sir.
Why not?
Because the way it is set up is for York County and the city of Pecoson for the light duty list, and then for the city of Williamsburg and James City and York County because we have many companies that I can think of that are right here in the audience where their lot is on one side of Penniman Road, which is James City, and the other side of the line is York County. It would be very wrong to tell him that when he pulls out of his lot, he's in York County, but we can't let him be on the list because his physical address is in James City. And with the way the upper end of the county is intertwined, you have James City on one side, Williamsburg on the other, and York County a few feet away, it wouldn't be right to tell the company, you can't be on the York County list because you're physically in the city of Williamsburg or in James City County when they're only five minutes away from the scene.
So when you refer to Williamsburg, I can understand Pecoson, but when you're referring to Williamsburg, does, does the city council have to vote on this?
For the city of Pecoson or the city of Williamsburg?
Or any city, do they have to vote on it? We're doing, we're doing just York County. But are we providing towing service through this board through, for Williamsburg and the city of Pecoson?
No, we're only regulating the use of, when they come into York County on our request, ours being the sheriff's office.
What are we doing then, Sheriff, to promote businesses, these businesses in York County? I mean, they're paying taxes. These guys that are in York County are paying York County taxes.
Correct.
People outside of York County operating here or not. So what are we doing to promote them? Are we doing anything in here?
There's not enough companies in York County, sir, because they don't have the lots. York County codes have restricted them to the point that they can't maintain a lot or keep a lot because of special zoning in York County. So we have to use companies from outside of York County because there's not enough locations for them.
Okay, would you recommend that we, do you adjust that? Do we take a look at our zoning ordinance, provide more towing service capability?
Well, certainly you could look at it. But if you look at the numbers that were shown and the number of toes, we're approaching the thousand this year, we don't have, we in York County don't have enough in York County businesses to keep up with that, that.
Okay, that's the capacity, I understand that. And you're right, I agree with you, I saw your numbers. But I'm saying for this board, then if we want to promote, and when you talked about it, promoting businesses in this county, what I'm saying then why, we're keeping towing services out of here, because I think you will see that some of these towing businesses are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in the tax for their property being here. So it is something we could promote. I just bring that up. So, okay, I'm, I'm being, I'm, I'm really concerned with, with oversight. I'm, I'm just because of this gets to be a problem. And I've lived long enough and I've had enough experience, I know this can happen, all right? If you're influencing who's on that list and not, and we're not monitoring how that's being used, then it can present a problem.
Well, actually, Mr. Shepherd, you're making it more fair because right now, before this ordinance, I control this list. This now transfers this list to you and the towing advisory board, takes it away from one single person or one entity's ability to control the list. I could remove people tomorrow for my own personal rules and regulations within the sheriff's office absent this board and the towing board. That's why we came and wanted this authority to try to make this as transparent and as fair to everyone across the board, the towing companies and the citizens as well, and take that authority away from one particular entity.
So is the board of supervisors involved in any arbitration here? Or any, 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 any dispute?
As much as you want to be, sir. But it goes to the towing advisory board. As I told Mr. Hilteroy, I'd be more than happy to come back or the chairman of the board to come back every year to give you an update on what's going on.
Well, I mean, if we're going to be responsible for it, I'd like to know how we're going to be responsible and how we're going to be reporting.
We will make it.
So I think those are valid points.
We'll come as often as you like.
Okay, that's my questions. Thank you, thank you very much.
Is that it?
That's it.
You sure? Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Are you thinking of a question?
No, I'm good, I'm waiting for the.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would care to speak to this issue? Please state your name and address, please. You've got three minutes. Normally you sign up to speak, but well, go ahead.
My name is William Chenault III. I'm president of Commonwealth Recovery Service. I've been on the county list, rotation list for 35 years. I think Sheriff Montgomery and Captain Houston has done a remarkable job in what they're doing. I do feel like there's some changes that need to be made. And I understand by listening to Captain Houston. He would come in here once a year during the anniversary time. I, I feel like there's going to be some changes that's going to need to be made during that timeframe that he hasn't addressed. I've looked over the, the draft itself, talking about the requirements. I mean, all the way down, I mean, I'll just make a scenario, it says the fire extinguisher. The fire extinguisher doesn't say what size. It doesn't matter whether it's one off of a fire truck with a one underneath your kitchen sink. There's little small things that need to be addressed. And it's going to have to be done over a period of time. Again, I feel like he's done a remarkable job. He's dealt with a lot of stress. If you only knew, if he was a clown on the wall in these meetings that we've had, you would be probably walked out no different than I have. This lady here has been really strong. But again, what I'm saying is, within a year's timeframe, they might need to make some changes. But I think everything they're doing is, is to the good. And, and I think everything will work great. But this, this has, the towing industry in York County has to be controlled. Because right now, it's out of control. And I've noticed that within the last 35 years. I mean, when Press Williams was here, it was smooth rolling. But that was back when we were doing 150 toes a month. Now we're doing 900 a month. So it's drastically changed in the last 35 years.
For the record, please, would you give us your name and address?
My name is William Chenault. My address, my business address is 2933 George Washington Moore Highway, Yorktown.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Is there anybody else who would care to speak? And start off with your name and address, please.
Yes, ma'am. Evening, board.
And speak to the microphone.
Yes, ma'am, sorry. My name is Garrett Byrd. I'm representing Byrd Towing and Recovery at 169 Gubanek Road, right next to the lovely sheriff's office. I'd just start off, I don't agree with the, the whole thing, just regulating, regulating anybody to some degree, everyone's, everyone's operating cost is different. So when you get into that, it kind of plays, you know, someone that has one truck with everything paid off and then you have someone with new trucks that has plenty of bills and insurance payments to go along with it. My really only concern is, is adding 10 trucks to the lower end, because that's the only part that concerns me. Or we currently have six on the lower end. And by adding it 10, that's 80% more trucks to already a regulated board, I should say. So you're going to lose a lot there. I mean, don't get me wrong, you might gain some, you know, somewhere. But you're definitely going to lose some by, by gaining 80% more trucks. So I'm, I'm at a call maybe once every other day, every two days. So add 80% into that, you know, I might get one a week, you know? If it's a busy weekend, getting DUIs for the sheriff's office, maybe two. So I'd just like for y'all to take that into consideration. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would care to speak? Please come forward, name and address, please.
My name is George Mahone. My business address is 197 Yule Road in Williamsburg, Virginia, which is upper, upper York County. My home address is 129 Scimino Road. I am on the towing advisory board. We put a lot of hard work into this and me as a business owner, I actually approve this because one thing it does do, it sets a level playing field and sets the rates. We have companies out there that may charge $5,000. You have companies out there that charge less. So it regulates the rate on what everything can be. And like Captain Houston said and the sheriff said, when they call us, those people don't have a choice. They don't have a choice to call a towing company. They don't have a choice to negotiate a rate. So what we did, we set up what we felt were fair rates to be across the board for everybody that tows for York County to tow that, charge that same rate for a same type call. Such as the same thing would be charged for DUI, whether it's down here in the lower end or whether it's in the upper end. And I'm, I'm for the ordinance to try to get some regularity amongst all the towing in the county.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Name and address, please.
Good evening. Jason Miller, 525 East Rochambeau Drive, Williamsburg, Virginia. You probably remember me from a couple of years ago when I applied for a special use permit and y'all were very welcoming during COVID for our growing business to come into the county. Since then, four years ago, I started this from nothing. Right now, we are the largest tow company in the Tywhorter area, over 30 trucks, 14 trailers, eight locations. We pay over $150,000 a year to York County in taxes and growing. It has gone up tremendously. I'm not, I'm not for the prices, I'll be honest with you. I don't think it's fair to regulate us. It's to the point where if this passes, I'll probably move my vehicles to either Gloucester, New Kent, Newport News, Hampton, Saluda, Matthews, Chesapeake. Moved on to my other locations. I just don't think it's right. Not only that, we're allowing companies outside of the area to be on the list. They say you can't get into York County. Well, if you follow all the rules, y'all saw, I went about it. I got on a special use permit. So we're allowing heavy companies, which they're not talking about, to be on York County's tow list. They're in Newport News and Hampton, but I can't be on Newport News or Hampton without having a lot in their county, which I just went through and had to do and get a business license. So it's a lot to it, just some things that people need to take into consideration. Other, they want to set some stuff at hourly. I don't think hourly is fair because people would be milking the clock. I just don't think that the pricing should be set. I'm one of few companies who can do the hazmat cleanup in the county. We can offer everything. Nobody else in this county or Tywhorter area can do it. As we did one today on 64 with a tractor and trailer. Come to find out, we towed it back to the shop, he ain't have any insurance. So guess what? I worked for free today. They don't tell you that. So I had $2.2 million in trucks sitting outside of 64 for free, for free. I don't get paid money from the county, I don't get paid money from the state. And I got to turn around and file $350 to get the title to junk this vehicle. And it could take anywhere from 30 to 120 days, depending on DMV, to get rid of it. Insurance companies are slower picking them up. They tire up our lot. I mean, they could sit there anywhere from three days to 30 days waiting on the insurance companies to hash it out. They were 50% fault, they were 49% at fault. It's not fair. Another one they propose is 24 hours free stores. DUI, police tow, maybe understandable, but for accidents, they should be more 24 hours. I mean, where else can you go and park your car and not get charged for it? I mean, we pay y'all personal property tax and property tax, I mean, why should we not charge for the first 24 hours? I mean, you're regulating business in York County. And if y'all, if y'all late that $150,000 a year, I hope you listen. If not, I don't have no issues with taking it anywhere else.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would care to speak? Name and address, please.
Shannon Macario, Shannon Macario, 525 East Rochambeau. So I just want to speak, I am for parts of the towing advisory board. I think regulating and making sure that things are done correctly, things are done across the board for both sections is a great idea. My biggest fear also is the pricing. I'm not completely against the pricing, but when you get down to it, a lot of people don't realize that there's a few different types of tow trucks. Everybody owns a different tow truck. I don't know if there's any tow companies here that have the same type, style, year, make, model of tow trucks. Rollbacks are essentially not a recovery truck. And I actually found that out today when I looked on the website. If you go to the website for Miller Industries, which a lot of us have, NRCs, things like that, they're actually called carrier trucks. And I can tell you from experience, when I answer the phone from dispatch, dispatch will sometimes ask you to bring a rollback out because the car is destroyed, has no wheels left on it, things of that sort. So when you get out there, technically, you're not supposed to be using that truck for recovery, but you can. So if this, if this ordinance is passed, now I'm going to have to be bringing two trucks out and I'm going to have to charge that customer for two trucks because I'm going to bring my recovery truck out and my carrier truck out. In addition to that, all these additional fees and things like that, they're going to add up. And I, I'm going to speak for my company when I say, a lot of times, we will get no insurance, liability only, things like that. And when you get those, those bills that rack up, you're going to turn around and you're going to turn those bills to your neighbors. The people that live next door to you that may be on a fixed income, that now went from li, or from full coverage to liability and now you're going to say, okay, well, according to the board, I'm going to charge you this, 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 this and this. And now you have a $1,000 bill. That's not fair to regulate those pricings to your neighbors that may not be able to afford it because they may not be in the same tax bracket as you. In addition to that, you know, one thing that worries me is they, they've taken a few things out where some companies have, like, for example, we have a blanket that we use for Teslas. We've had one of, a Tesla, an electric vehicle catch on fire on the back of our truck. They don't want us to be able to charge for all these additional things that we use, understandably so. I get where they're coming from. But why would we invest in those types of things? That's where we were saying, every company is different. So to regulate pricing when one company may have paid off trucks where I bought additional things to protect the vehicles around us and there was an incident a few weeks ago where one truck caught on fire in Richmond and it burned five trucks in a row, that could happen in our lot if we didn't use that blanket. So I am for parts of it, but I don't think that it's ready to be implemented how it currently stands.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would care to speak to this issue? See, now I'm going to close the public hearing now. And what is the pleasure of the board? Ready comments before we vote?
Well, first, first we have to move it, then we have discussion, right?
Go for it. You going to move it?
I would move proposed ordinance 2513R.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Are we going to?
No, we're going to discuss.
Discuss it, discuss it, please, discuss it.
The R is referring to the comments I made earlier on the disciplinary side.
At 15, yeah.
Yeah.
I go along with that disciplinary thing. I, I think, I recognize the tremendous work that went into doing this. I mean, this is a lot of work. But it still flies to me, flies in the face of this, trying to address everything in the world that pertains to this business. And we rely on that, on the towing board, I hope I'm saying that correctly, to use their judgment and involve, be involved in the idea of what needs to be done. I'm not convinced that we've, we've, we're adequately have addressed the issues. One big issue is this insurance. Now, if we go out and have a wreck, okay, and we don't have insurance, I say, I run into, Sheila, you run into me, okay? And you don't have insurance, that we have a no-fault state, okay? Your insurance company, you don't have one, but the state will pay my $500 deductible and then, then, then it's in their, their business. But evidently, the towing company doesn't have this, okay? So I've talked to one gentleman before he showed up, his name was Jason, that he was covered in dirt, grime because he had a truck that he talked about being out there, didn't have the semi, didn't have insurance. And so there is no recoup, the money, because the state's not going to give them anything. And so there, we are now, where are these fees and all this operation? Are we helping this business? Where are we covering this? We're not, we haven't talked one thing about what happens in insurances. I mean, we don't want to say this, but I guarantee you, if you're going to run a business, you've got to make a profit. And so his truck and service demand that went out there, they didn't collect any money. So guess where they got to get the money from? The next person, the next, the next accident. That's where they're going to get the money. Just, just face it, there's none coming in from anywhere else and they're not running a charity. And I don't think that this is addressing, I don't know how you address that. Unless, like one lady, I think she said something about certain parts of certain kinds. If you go, you pull over somebody with a DUI, well, I, I can understand that. I understand that now you've got a criminal act. If you pull somebody that's actually got a criminal act. But if Joe Schmuckerelli standing on the side of the road with a dead car and the sheriff pulls up and then they say, okay, we're going to get some, get you some help. Now, you know, you're at, now you're, what's happening there? I think a lot of these things, it would seem to me that, I mean, if I need a tow truck, I call AAA. I get a tow truck, right? That's not involving law enforcement. If I have to involve law enforcement and I got insurance that's going to cover it, okay? That's the insurance I have. So when we talk about these fees, I don't see me being charged the fee. I see the insurance company being charged the fee. It goes along with same thing like, you know, when we do the ambulances, you know? We, now, remember before, we used to charge nothing and we, and now what we do is do that gentle compassionate billing.
They can pay for it, yes.
Right. Make, make the insurance pay for it. So this, this ordinance is, is, I mean, the ordinance we've got is addressing the issue, but it's not covering everything that needs to be covered. And I, I just, I, I, I just have trouble with us regulating a business.
But everything you said there, how, how does not have this ordinance address any of that? If we didn't have this ordinance here under consideration, how does anything that you said?
Well, the, the first thing is going to be, they're going to have their fees. They're going to, they're going to make their business work.
But they're going to have the same problem with picking that tractor trailer up and finding out it doesn't have insurance, whether we have this ordinance or not.
That's right. But they have been the business, they can, they can figure out how.
But they can charge a million dollars for it, a guy that doesn't have any insurance is not going to pay it.
Well, in reality, that's, I mean, it's a good point. Reality, you go, oh, I'm going to go to court and sue somebody. Well, if you don't get, you don't get blood out of a rock, right? So that's not going to solve the problem. But they're going to run a business. A business is going to, they got, they balance it out. I guarantee you, if, if five of us or four of us up here have a wreck and one of us doesn't have insurance, then the company that does the towing is going to charge the four of us more money to cover for the one that doesn't. That's how this business is going to work. I don't see it working any other way.
How, how they charging you in that scenario?
They'll charge my insurance company. They will send a bill to whatever the insurance company, I mean, I don't know.
If Mr. Horroy gets in a wreck, he doesn't have insurance, they're not going to send a bill to your insurance company to cover, cover him?
The insurance company, no, the state will cover him. They don't have that in this business.
Right, so again, how?
My point, my point is this, they have a business to run.
Yeah.
Okay, let them run the business.
All right, well, I go back to, you're, you're involved in an accident. You're a victim of an accident. And you laid up in a, in ambulance, headed to the hospital. Your vehicle still needs to be recovered. It's got, you've got to remove it from the road so traffic can flow.
Right, got that.
They're not asking you, they're not waking you up on the gurney, go, hey, who, who do you want to, who do you want to call? The sheriff's office is doing that on your behalf. And you don't need to play that roulette wheel, well, I hope they get the cheaper one this time and not the more expensive one, you know?
So, so, okay, but so in a business operation, the guys will go, okay, I'm going to charge, I'm going to charge this person maybe an extra 500, 600 bucks. Or it might be a company that they might charge 4, 5,000 dollars. The point is, how are they going to get that 4, 5,000 dollars if I don't have it? How are they going to get it? They're going to go to court? Well, that's going to cost them lawyer fees and everything else. How are they going to get that money? So they're going to have to come back and with a rate, and I'm going to say, well, I can pay 4, 5,000 dollars, I'll give you 250, okay? Like, this is business, this is a business decision. So what we're doing is we're getting in the middle of a business, a business.
But, but we're setting the playing field.
I understand, I understand.
And the business can decide whether they want to participate on that field or not.
That's right. They don't have to be part of the list. Can I get involved in this a little bit? This is a work in progress. I think that, I think that the group has gotten together and they put together a definitive amendment that we have here to vote on. As I said, it's a work in progress, come back in a year if it needs to be adjusted, can always be adjusted, practically speaking, after they've had more experience working with the, the amounts that they have set, all right? But I, I think we're protecting the citizens because if you're in an accident, you're a victim and somebody could come and charge you a lot more than you could possibly pay. And if you don't have insurance, he loses out. If you have insurance, you end up paying more insurance after the accident. I just think, one step at a time, and I think this is the first step that we need to take forward and then we will massage it, if you will. And all of you out there, after you've had experience with this, you can come back and the, the towing group can work on it. But I think we need to start now and put it into place. Anybody disagree with me? We, any more comments on this?
So.
Before we vote?
Yeah. So, I hear everything that everybody's saying. I think right now, my concern is, if we don't do something, it's on Sheriff Montgomery. It's on him. He gets a call of shots, good, bad, or indifferent. And there's nobody regulating him.
Okay.
To do what he wants to do.
You made a point.
And he has asked us, he's come to us and asked us if we can appoint a board, and we said yes, we were going to do that. We appointed a board, and they've come back with the first, the first line of items in the draft. And I think we've got to start somewhere. And maybe it's not a year. Maybe it's six months. Captain Houston will come back and say, hey, here's some things that we've learned, and here's some things that we'd like to see adjusted.
Okay. Thank you. I think we've had enough discussion.
I support the idea, I do support the idea of helping the sheriff with his operations.
Thank you.
It's okay. That, that to me is very, very important.
Okay. This is, this is, roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Holroyd is to adopt proposed ordinance number 25-13R pursuant to the Code of Virginia and the York County Code to amend Chapter 15, Article V, thank you, of towing, described therein as amended. Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to the consent calendar, I didn't get a chance to, to have any comments by the board. And one of the things that I think some of us have been involved in is, is the revised watershed agreement. The first agreement, and this is the Chesapeake Bay agreement about how we're going to protect the environment and, and the beauty and everything that people enjoy with the Chesapeake Bay, but with the pollution and everything that's been happening. There was a real problem with the bay, but gradually, people have been paying attention, and people have been working towards what they need to do to protect the environment and the, and the habability of the bay tenants. So, there's a new chapter in the watershed agreement, and they've simplified it, they say. Well, in some ways, they have simplified it. They've cut the agreement down from the original 10 goals to four broader goals. Thriving habitat and wildlife in the bay, clean water, which really, I think, should be first, healthy landscapes, and engaged communities. And so, what's happened now is, a lot of people have been working for a couple of years on approving changes to the agreement. And there is a public comment period that started July 1st, and it goes through September the 1st. And my suggestion to you would be to get on the, go on the internet, get on the ChesapeakeBay.com, and then look at the new changes that have been made. And then, you have the ability to make comments on it. I think the way it's been written, it's really more for people who are more involved in it than Joe Citizen. But I think Joe Citizen really should pay attention to it because we all benefit from the Chesapeake Bay. And there are key outcomes for local governments, and that's why I'm bringing this here because I, I have a little bit to do with it. Land use decision to support, changing the environmental conditions, toxic contaminants and mitigation for that. And then, local leadership. What can we as local leaders do to ensure that our government complies with the ordinance that are necessary to maintain the healthy quality of the Chesapeake Bay? So, those are my two cents. But please, you know, you've got trees that can be planted. You've got water that can be cleaned. You've got streams that can be cleaned. There is so much that any citizen can do. And if we each do our part, we're going to reap the benefits for years to come. So, do pay attention to it. Sometimes you get involved in things like this, and the legalese and the comments and, and the verbiage gets to be, gets beyond you. But the basic needs are right there. So, if you can get through it, I would appreciate it if you at least pay attention to it and support all the work. I know the county has been very much involved in this since, since I came on the board, before I came on the board, because we're low-lying areas, and we, we start out with sewers so that we would protect what ran into the waters. We, at one point, we had, we're Tomlips. It was so bad that all the oyster bays around your area were so contaminated, you couldn't have fresh oysters. Now, you can. So, we each all have to do our part. And so, do consider it if you have the time or you have the interest. Please go to, to the Chesapeake Bay Program website and read the, the changes that have been made. And thank you very much for that. And now, I'm going to go to the consent calendar. Okay. Item number one is the approval of the minutes. Item 1111, excuse me, it's getting late. Item number 12 is a transportation alternative program. Number 13 is the retirement resolution for Kevin Leclere. 14, retirement resolution for Wilton Wilson. 15, request for refund for business license tax. 16, request for refund for business license tax. 17, request for refund real estate taxes from a disabled veteran. Is there anyone on there that you would, that you would like to poll? For discussion? If not, I will entertain a moment to approve the consent calendar.
I'll.
So, move. Roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Holroyd is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next regular meeting will be held at 6:00 PM, August 5th, in the East Room of York Hall. But now, we're going to go into closed session. Mr. Holroyd, would you please take us into closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair. In accordance with Section 2.2-3711, Section A, Section 7 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to consult with legal counsel on a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel.
Thank you very much. Roll call.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all very much for being here tonight. Thank you for watching, those of you at home.